This evening on a sunny summer fall day. So thanks for for attending. Laura, I don't see any attendees here this evening. I wasn't expecting there to be any. I do think I had told some council members that we would have some of our directors here. That was my mistake. I had seen the invite and it said required on there, but tonight Laura is with us. She's actually helping run the meeting and can provide some feedback for from a director's perspective if we have questions. And so it'll really be ourselves and the mayor and our city attorney. And our first item, in fact, Laura, you've got a recording going?
I do. Thank you.
Okay, well, I will formally call us to order. And I have the pleasure of introducing Anne Bennett. Anne Bennett is with the Washington City's Insurance Authority. She is WCIA's Executive Director. And I think it's totally appropriate for, especially since we have a new city attorney that we're taking a look at liabilities, how to avoid those liabilities. I think it's good to review those regardless, but I think especially it's it's pretty wise. This evening was really a big part of the direction came from Daniel Kenny, our city attorney. He encouraged us to to look at some additional training for all of us. And he'll be leading the second hour, which is a discussion with the mayor and council members. He can go into more detail, but certainly about how we can be more effective and and that I think is something we're all trying to work and advance. So Anne, with that, I'll pass it on to you and we can begin our training. And Laura, if you need to share a screen, I don't know if Anne needs that.
I can actually share my screen, Laura.
Okay, that's really great because the city clerk in me, I'd have to go find it. So I appreciate that. Thank you for being willing to do that. Otherwise I could find it.
Yeah, I can share mine. Before we get started, I'm Anne Bennett. As the council member introduced me, I am the Executive Director for WCIA. I've been with WCIA for 24 years now. I can't believe that long. My background is insurance and claims, and so I come from a very different world. And so I'm going to be talking to you tonight about how you as a council can avoid liability. I am going, what I found with the Zoom trainings is that I pause after each slide because it's really hard for me to necessarily see if you have questions. And I do appreciate questions and being interactive. I'm also going to pause in case Daniel wants to add a few things on to my slides. I find it works well if I have a point and Daniel might know specific city examples to help you out, or if he, being a city attorney, they usually have really good stories. So I do too tell war stories, but I don't name names. So if you think you know who it is, I'm not going to tell on them. So let me go ahead and share my screen and I will pull up the do's and don'ts and let me get my slideshow started. All right. So first line of business is to tell you who we are. You invited us, and so I thought it'd be nice for you to know who WCIA is and what we do. WCIA is a municipal entity. We were formed back in 1981 by nine cities who couldn't find insurance in the traditional marketplace. And what's interesting is that that's going on today. Back in the 80s, there was what's called an insurance crisis because, believe it or not, cities are in a good risk. And so all insurance companies started canceling insurance and there was no way for cities to self insure their risk unless they pooled their resources together. And this is, this was a nationwide event. And nationally, oh, about 80% of cities and schools and counties are insured through risk pools. So what you find is it's not usually the very big cities. It's usually, you know, medium to smaller sized cities. WCIA currently has 163 members. Duval became a member five years ago, so you're fairly new to WCIA. Sometimes when I'm doing this training, you know, the people will hear they've been a member since the 80s. And the idea is that, you know, we're a long term partner. And we believe in a long term relationship. We have over 165 million in assets and we have the strongest financials of any pool in Washington state. And we believe very strongly that with assets, you have the ability to have choices. And so we make sure that we can protect our members first and foremost. And then we also believe strongly in risk management. Oops, sorry, hit the wrong one. So what do we provide? We provide all of your liability coverage. So auto liability, employment, errors and omissions, and you have $25 million per occurrence. And that is a lot of insurance, but believe it or not, with some of the numbers that are coming out right now, is 25 million enough? That's always a question. I think it is. That's why we have it, but I'm kind of surprised at where we're getting at with jury verdicts and settlements. What makes WCI unique is that it is the insureds running the insurance company. Every single member has a vote on our full board of directors. And you decide what the coverage is going to look like. You decide what you want to cover, what you don't want to cover. And so my mission and the mission of my staff is to always look to help the members. So unlike a for profit entity, what I'm trying to do is figure out a way that I can provide you coverage for something rather than exclude coverage. And my job, when I started in insurance in claims, the first thing I was always looking at is how do I get out of covering this altogether before I even have to start investigating the claim? That's not how we do business. We do purchase some reinsurance and we purchase cyber and pollution liability for our members. Members can purchase through us crime and fidelity and some other coverages. All of us at WCIA have a staff of 20. We do all of the work in house. So we do all of the claims in house. So you have experienced adjusters. They'd have no other claims that they're handling, no more clients that they have to serve than you, the members. And as I mentioned before, one of the real tenants in pooling is risk management. And that's really what we strive to do. We train over 13,000 people every year in our membership. And when we had the pandemic, we flipped everything over to web based training. And we believe strongly that each member is pooling their risk with one another. And we want to make sure you're a good risk. And Duval participates in what we call our compact, which is participating with our risk management rep in a best practices audit of risk management as well as going to three trainings a year. So there is a real commitment when you join WCIA and we're here as a partner. And I'm here to help you make your city better through risk management. Any questions on WCIA? Okay, so let's dive into you as individual council members. And we're going to start with the really good news, which is you as an individual can can receive absolute immunity for legislative activities. And in one of these trainings, I had someone saying, well, isn't it individuals receive? What do you mean can or may receive? And the answer is it's very fact specific. And there are some things you can do to erode that and we'll get into that a little bit later. But basically, when you're legislating, when you're adopting budgets, when you're adopting ordinances and resolutions, you have an immunity. So I can't sue you because I disagree with your legislative decision. But you only get this immunity when you're within the context of a council meeting as a whole. But this is an extremely strong immunity. Many years ago, I had a council that was working on their historic preservation district and they designated an area. A property owner was very unhappy with that decision and he decided to sue all the individual council members for that decision. We brought forth all kinds of letters saying you can't do that. They have immunity. You can't sue them individually for that decision. You need to dismiss them. Not only did he not dismiss them, but we had to bring a motion to get it dismissed and we asked for sanctions. That was granted. After the fact, he appealed the verdict. And we ended up winning that appeal and he owed us over $100,000 in sanctions and attorney's fees. Because that's how strong this immunity is. And we bring this forward quite a bit when individual council members are sued. But remember, it's only within the context of the meetings as a whole. And we'll get into a little bit later where that may be eroded and some of the actions that could get rid of this immunity for you as an individual. I also wanted to mention, as a council member, you are insured under WCIA's coverage document. So you are actually, under my coverage document, when you are acting in the course and scope of your duties as a council member or official for the city of Duval, you have coverage under my coverage agreement up to $25 million. Any questions? Okay. So the first area, and these are in no particular order, I was going to talk to you about where I see council members can get themselves into problems is in the role of land use. So one of the early areas that we really concentrated on was looking at councils sitting in what's called quasi judicial roles. And what that means is you are hearing appeals and you're sitting as a judge and you have to be fair and impartial. The good news is that Duval has transferred that risk to a hearing examiner for the appeals of various matters. So what my understanding is, is that you sit quasi judicially with permitting was my understanding and not in the role of appellate. And why we like that is because when you sit quasi judicially, there can be times when the public comes to you and says, I don't like this development. I don't like what's happening here. And when you're in that role, you cannot communicate with either an opponent or a proponent of a project. So how do you as a council serve your citizens when you're saying, I can't talk to you? And you can't talk to them because you're going to be sitting in that quasi judicial role. And you must be fair and impartial. And what's interesting about that is that it's not whether you think you're fair and impartial. It's whether a reasonable outside observer would think you're fair and impartial. And so oftentimes that's where we get decisions when councils are sitting quasi judicially in an appeal and make a decision, there'll be allegations that there was a violation of this appearance of fairness. There'll also be allegations that the decision was arbitrary and capricious. It wasn't based on findings in fact and rule of law. And that's where hearing examiners can really help with evidentiary rulings, with setting forth these findings of fact. So the good news is that anytime you would be sitting quasi judicially, your city attorney and Laura are going to tell you, you are in a quasi judicial role right now. Or you will be sitting quasi judicially for this matter. And that means you get to be a judge. And so as you watch whatever shows you do, the judges, you know, they are fair and impartial. They don't know the parties and they are taking information as it's brought to them. Only what is brought to them on a closed record are they making their decisions on. So again, I think you're going to have some limited liability, but when you hear that you will be sitting in that role, keep in mind that appearance of fairness doctrine. If you think you have a conflict, you should address that conflict and say, on the record, I have this conflict and I'm either recusing myself. Or you can also identify the conflict and say, I don't believe it interferes or I may have a conflict. I don't believe it interferes. So I'm going to pause here and see if Daniel had anything he wanted to add on the quasi judicial legislative land use rules.
Yeah, thank you so much. And thank you again for being here tonight. You know, I think the just two quick comments that I would make is I think both staff and council members should think about things that may come before them in a quasi judicial matter in the future so that you don't tee yourself up for potential conflicts too early. I know often, you know, particularly in a smaller jurisdiction like Duval, you may know of things before they actually get to the point where they're going to come to you in a quasi judicial matter. So just keeping that in mind that if it's heading down a path that's going to get there, think about that early. So I think that's one thing. And then the other thing about having a hearing examiner, which obviously I'm a big proponent of as well, is it allows you to be the, you know, representative that you were elected to be, you can continue to talk to the residents and discuss issues and explore those issues in further detail. Whereas if you were doing what the hearing examiner does, you would be precluded from that. So it allows you to to really embrace your role as a representative of the residents of the city. So there's two quick comments there.
Thanks. Any questions before we move on? So aside from that area, oh, I'm sorry.
I don't think anyone, I raised my hand with a question. Oh, okay. Maybe Director Thomas could give us an example of when we might have a quasi judicial decision in front of us. I think like lot specific reasons, I feel like I've heard, but maybe Director Thomas could share.
It depends on if it's a concomitant rezone, but like development agreements are quasi judicial. So those are just some of the examples. Almost a lot of what we have goes to a hearing examiner. So it's on occasion. And then what we would do is Daniel and I would talk. I know pretty much the line now, but I always make sure and touch base with our attorney. And so it's, you know, items that come before the council for a decision. So like a development agreement would be one of those items. But it's not a subdivision because you don't hear, you know, you don't hear a subdivision, although council does hear final plats. But that is something that we'll probably work on because now state statute allows final plats to be administrative. And then that would would be done differently as well. Daniel, do you have any examples to add?
You know, I'm so new to your code that I actually don't know where those places are, just to be totally honest. But they do, they do come up from time to time, much less with a hearing examiner. And it's always in the planning permit realm in my experience.
Anne, Mike, and I have a question. Do annexations fall in this category? Because we reach out and talk to citizens and, you know, I don't know if it seems like it's a bit removed, but but I thought I'd just ask directly if annexations, because we do have urban growth areas several around the city and those will be becoming an issue. And we always say, gee, do we ask citizens where they stand and where we talk to individuals that contact us with concerns? What are your thoughts?
From WCIA standpoint, we don't generally get involved in annexations because there's generally not a damage or a liability component that arises out of that for WCIA. I'm going to defer to Daniel because I'm not sure if there are other areas. But I don't think you get into hearings or quasi judicial hearings with those. But I will say I'm not as familiar, so I'll defer that one to Daniel.
It's a great question. I had never thought of it. I would presume that that's legislative and wouldn't be quasi judicial. There may be, and I'm just trying to think the last time I did it with another client, you know, public hearings and things like that that you'd have process involved with, but in terms of actually a decision making hearing with a record for for the in the context of a quasi judicial, I don't think so. No. Laura.
Daniel, sometimes we require usually a pre annexation agreement as part of annexation and sometime there's a development agreement. So it there can, there is some gray area just depending on the annexation.
Sure, that makes sense. Yeah. Great question, though.
Should we avoid talking to those citizens individually? Or, you know, there was a group that actually asked to come talk to the city, you know, that were part of our north urban growth area and those owners came and chatted with us. And, you know, I mean, we listened, you know, we didn't have much input, but I think about trying to avoid that. This is a gray area, so I don't want to get too deep into it. You know, I don't think it's a problem for us. I don't foresee that, but it just seems like it, you know, potentially fraught with with people who want to get in the city and have their property be more valuable and and citizens may not be ready to do that. So.
Yeah, unfortunately, I, we just don't get involved because there's just generally not a damage claim associated. So that that is, I will say, that's one I do not know.
Well, thank you for taking my question.
Yeah. So the next area with land use is aside from those two areas, I wanted to talk about, I've got three cases that I talk about because it's where you could have liability. So you want to make sure you don't insert yourself into the process. And the first case I'm going to talk about is one that was WCIA's. And in fact, I inherited it from someone else when I became claims manager. And as you can see, there's a very big number on that. It was a $10 million verdict. So basically what occurred factually is that the city of Buryan Incorporated in 93. And one of the reasons they incorporated is that they did not want to be a apartment city. Was kind of, we want to be a single family home community. We're tired of our the apartments that King County is putting in our area, so they incorporated. Westmark was a massive development involving multiple apartment complexes on a very steep slope. So it did have a lot of critical issues with the development. It was very complex. When it began, it began in King County. And when Buryan Incorporated, the council said, we want you to take over that project. We want you a city and and to be quite honest with almost no staff to take on this project. And the reason we want to take this over is that we don't like it and we don't like what King County has been doing. So there were multiple delays throughout this process. And mainly, you know, there was kind of a back and forth of were the delays because of the environmental issues? Some of it was inexperience. But by, you know, the time this was going on, the developers losing all kinds of money. I mean, this occurred over years and years and years. So prior to my getting this case, there actually at one point was a settlement. And the settlement involved paying of money by WCIA of about $250,000. And it involved agreed development conditions that the city council was going to approve and say, yes, we're going to agree to this. So case is settled, all the agreements go out, they're signed. Westmark starts the process. And as they're starting the process, the council goes, wait a minute, wait a minute, what do you mean you're starting this process? And they said, well, we have an agreement. You agreed to these things. And they said, well, not really. It wasn't an open session and we never formally approved it. So you're not going to be able to go ahead and we're going to restart this. So low and behold, Westmark goes back to court, tries to enforce the agreement the city reached. The court agreed, the city didn't do it in open session, it was invalid and we were off to the races and litigation again. So we end up eventually going to trial. And throughout the trial was testimony from various people, including the developers and staff that showed a pattern of the city council members coming in and saying, stall the project, don't allow the project. We don't like this project. There was a lot of interaction between staff and council. And there was a lot of council members openly saying, we don't want this in our community. So when we go to trial, instead of a jury hearing, the delays were because we were short staffed and there were all these environmental issues. All they heard was council interfered and stopped this project. And multi years worth of damages were incurred. The jury verdict came in at $10 million. And what happens when you get a jury verdict of $10 million is you go to court of appeals. And that's what we did. We thought, oh, this is, you know, the jury didn't understand the case. The case was about environmental issues with this, you know, area. So what occurred is that the court of appeals not only upheld the verdict, but they found, and it's an excoriating decision on the council that basically says this council interfered with this business. And not only are we upholding it, that this is deplorable. And they gutted the council for their actions in this. So what I would say is be very careful, even if you are against a project about interfering with staff. Because what they're going to allege is that you interfered with this business expectancy. And staff felt in this case, they felt staff was intimidated and was treating this developer unfairly. The next case I'm going to talk to you about, and I always call this the city attorney's favorite case, is Mission Springs versus the city of Spokane. I don't have the city of Spokane and didn't when this occurred. So in the Mission Springs case, there was a big development going in, very controversial. But again, it met all of the development requirements and the city was proceeding through the process. At one point, a group of citizens contacted the mayor and said, we're not happy. What can we do? So the mayor said, well, why don't you guys come to the next city council meeting? He invited all of the opponents of the project and didn't invite the developer. So not on the agenda, just goes off on his own and says, oh, we have a lot of citizens here. They're very interested in the status of the Mission Springs development and asks the development director to give an update. The director says we're, we are issuing the grading permit. This is, you know, starting. And so the mayor then says, I am directing you not to issue the permit. The city attorney, and I'm still not sure why, but on the record, instead of saying, I think we need a quick executive session, which my guess is Daniel's going to do that. He's going to stand up and say, council, I think we need to go into executive session and take you and explain to you the legal ramifications of not issuing a permit. Instead, this city attorney on the record said, you are obligated to issue the permit. It is against the law for this permit not to be issued and you will be violating state and federal law if you do so. And what do you think the mayor did? Don't issue the permit. And so when this occurred, Mission Springs immediately went to court. And what occurred is that the court found that not only was there no legislative immunity for the individuals who directed the planning director not to issue the permit, but that they were liable under state and federal law. And that they intentionally violated the law. And that's important because in all insurance, including mine, if you intentionally break the law, that's not what insurance is for. Insurance is for accidents. And so no insurance carrier is going to cover a knowing violation of the law. So what I would say is listen to your city attorney. When your city attorney says, you know, this, I would advise against this or may say, and a lot of them would just say, I think we need to have a quick executive session, take you back, explain the law and why you can't break it. But again, I don't know in the end what this case settled for because there was no coverage. And I do understand there was all kinds of litigation afterwards regarding who was going to pay. And I heard there were big numbers that eventually got paid, but I have no idea who paid it. So it's kind of a mystery to me, but I know their insurance carriers definitely did not. And lastly, I was going to talk about, there's a case, it actually is a positive case for Kitsap County. And it involved a very complicated development permit that needed a lot of Department of Health work. And there was a long delay. And so usually when there's a long delay, often what will happen is the developer will start, start filing public records requests to say like, what's going on? Why the delay? Looking for problems. And what this developer found was an email from a county commissioner that said, we are going to do everything possible within the law to stop this project. And because the developer found that everything within the law, they said, oh, there's a taint and they pointed actually to Westmark. And you'd be, you know, a lot of land use decisions point to Westmark and because it was so egregious. And so they were saying, this is a classic situation where our delays are because of the commissioners interfering with the process. The good news is that there was no evidence that the commissioners talked to staff. And the review of the record shows a lot of the delays had to do with the Department of Health and had nothing to do with the county. So why this is a good case is it says, when you act in good faith and when there's no evidence of bad faith, evidence of bad faith, you can win this case regardless of a bad email, the whole process was not tainted. So any questions on this one?
So I think I'll just quickly jump in because wow, three great cases there. I appreciate all three of those for different reasons. And just, just running through the list, um, Westmark, you know, I think the big takeaway there is remembering and understanding your legislative role and understanding that, um, as a, as a, an elected, uh, representative and legislator, um, you're not part of administration, you're not part of staff and, uh, kind of understanding where those lines are. So we don't get into a Westmark situation for sure. And Mission Springs, uh, that's the easiest one up there. Follow the law. And I'm here to, to, to help you with that. But, um, if there's ever any question on it, um, you know, let's talk offline during a meeting, executive session, whenever it is, um, let's make sure that we're always following the law. And then for Woods View, two, two great ones there, a great reminder on emails being public records. Um, you know, uh, uh, we can get into another time, but you know, that includes your, um, uh, city of Duval email address. It can also include your personal email address if you're doing city business on there, which you should not be doing for the record. Um, but you can't get around public records by having city business on your personal email. So that's a great reminder. Um, and then the final takeaway that I thought was great is good faith, uh, means you're going to win. So, so if you, if you're doing things the way you should be doing them, um, you're, you're going to be in a great position. So this is a great slide. Thank you for that. I think Laura's talking, but I can't hear her. Is that just me?
Sorry.
Oh, there you go.
Sorry about that. Uh, I believe council member Napplin has a question and council member Lengel has a question.
Do you want me to? I can't, I can't see, so.
I think that was from before when I raised my hand for my first question. I don't have another question.
Okay. And council member Lengel, did you have a question?
Um, this might be skipping ahead, but in terms of, um, uh, breach of law, um, we're talking about land use, uh, another area of common suit is, um, personnel, boy, items. Is that next up by any camp?
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
It is. Okay, I will continue on. Well, as a preview, uh, personnel is definitely another area, um, where city councils can get into trouble. And what I would say here is this is another area where you definitely want to stay legislative. And the reason you want to stay in your legislative role is because when you stray into that executive role, you, uh, can be sued individually. Uh, when I say stay in your legislative role, it's approving policies, budget, but even in your legislative role, um, I'm going to give you a little, uh, war story where you have to be careful. Uh, I had a council that, uh, deeply disliked, um, their, their city attorney. And one of the reasons they deeply dislike their city attorney is they believe that this person, um, was a whistleblower of some illegal activity by a former mayor. And what they decided to do, uh, was not, uh, warn anybody and took, again, not on the agenda, took a motion that said, we're going to bring our city attorney office in house, uh, and therefore we no longer need the services of our city attorney. And so while that was legislative in nature, what happened is we got a lawsuit that basically said that it was a firing of the city attorney in violation of the whistleblower act. And this was actually a federal lawsuit. And, uh, the problem was that there was, there was no evidence that the council studied, asked staff to study, what is the cost benefit analysis of in-house versus outside council? Um, there was no prior on the record discussion about, hey, we're evaluating budget, this might save us money. It was clearly in the eyes of the court retaliatory. So again, um, we kind of get into the good face stuff. If you're doing something legislatively, uh, that could get you into trouble, keep that in mind as well. And that's why I tell that, uh, war story. But in the executive role, um, which is the mayor's role, it's the management of employees, the hiring and firing of employees and discipline. And I myself am a manager of employees and I know that when I make hire and fire decisions, I can be sued personally for that decision. And personnel law changes constantly. And in fact, it changes so constantly that we have trainings, uh, almost daily on personnel and on how, um, how to best manage various exposures. We also offer what, a program that allows our members to talk to an employment attorney when they are facing difficult employment issues. And we, you know, it's not on any loss runs. It's completely administrative cost to us. And you can then talk to one of the attorneys about what's happening and the, you know, the mayor can get good legal advice. I have had councils get involved in employment decisions. I had one council, um, this was actually a city manager, um, that had the higher fire authority and fired a director that many of the council liked. Now, the reason for hiring, firing the director was theft and it was theft, uh, that was investigated and, um, that was upheld. But the council members who liked this person decided that they would hold public meetings regarding the firing of this individual, decided that they would have protests about the firing of this individual. And so what do you think happened? The individual then said, well, obviously I shouldn't have been fired and filed a wrongful termination lawsuit. Now, the council, you know, kept trying to tell the city manager, you have to overturn this and the city manager said, no, it's theft. I'm not overturning the decision. What ends up occurring is that we go through years of litigation. We have council members sitting on both sides. We have council members that are testifying for the plaintiff and actually testifying against the city. It became so divisive that that council couldn't conduct business because this was interfering in their workload because they were so angry at one another. We ended up, WCIA stopped communicating altogether with the city because we knew that our information was being leaked and given, um, to the plaintiff. And that's because, you know, when the council was briefed, you had people who, you know, did not keep that executive session confidential. None of those council members ended up being on the council in the end, when we won the case, we got a defense verdict, the termination was upheld. And the reason it was, is because the city manager kept saying, this is the reason, had nothing to do with anything else other than the fact that there was missing property. It was found at his home and it was stolen. And so what I would say is even though you may have the best intentions, straying into that executive role can really hurt the city. You also want to make sure that the, the city employees aren't coming to you and that you're directing them back to the executive. Because the last thing you want is for them to get differing information and differing direction. And so the idea is that if, uh, uh, somebody comes to you and says, I have a problem, then you direct them to the executive office to make sure that there's a problem, you need to talk to the mayor or whoever is appropriate. Um, but generally in your city, it's going to be the mayor. So again, I'm going to talk a little bit on the next slide about harassment discrimination, which is very specific, but this is just the general area, um, that I see there's a lot of problems when council gets involved in personnel actions. So any questions on this one? Okay.
The mayor has a question on this one?
Sure.
Um, thank you, Anne. Um, so part of my, uh, question deals with, um, you know, existing contracts, um, and uh, so collective bargaining contracts and processes for, uh, promotions of employees and determining, um, whether an employee is eligible for promotion. Um, in my past history, um, that has all been administrative at the executive level and every, every place that I've worked. Um, however, we do have a new law that changes that. Um, and I'm curious to hear your perspective based on what you've just said, um, because I can say beyond a shadow of a doubt that, um, employees have questions at this point of who is in charge of their promotions and their pay.
Um, I, I'm going to preface this by saying, I don't get involved in collective bargaining very much. However, um, you know, the, usually the agreements prevail on who gets, um, you know, it, it's based on what your agreement says and you have to follow that. But I'm going to defer actually to Daniel on that one because, I mean, collective bargaining is not something WCIA gets very involved in. Um, but my experience with most of our members is that's done by HR or executives. And part of the reason is because they know, um, some of the law also, you have to be very careful about, um, discrimination and how some of, you know, there can be some other things that flow, um, out of some of the bargaining, the layoffs. Um, we've had some claims out of layoffs that involve, you know, only, you know, the older employees or it affected women disproportionately to men based on how it was drafted. Um, that's the only way I get involved in those. And so I'm going to defer to Daniel kind of on that.
Sure, I appreciate that. And, and you know, I, I don't practice, uh, labor and employment particularly for the reason that you noted that it changes so much. And so really it's most effective if you have a specialization in that. And so the city's working with a labor attorney and we, we have great employment attorneys at the firm. Um, but I think I would, I would concur with what you just said. And, um, I think if you just go back to the last slide real quick. One thing, uh, for the legislative role, um, there, there is the approval of those, uh, collective bargaining agreements that will come to council. So I think that that is a, um, a very important way that council gets involved with, uh, personnel is, is working with those agreements and throughout that process. I know the city's involved with that right now. Um, and, um, I think that the, um, when you stray too far away from those things in that first category, um, and you, you end up impacting, uh, working conditions and you, you know, that needs to be, uh, bargained with the union. And so, and again, I'm not a labor attorney, but, um, that's the one, that's the red flag that always pops up for me is when you start, um, getting too far into working conditions, whether that's with a policy or an actual change in day-to-day operations, you need to make sure that that's being done in the, in the appropriate way, uh, to make sure that those union agreements are, are fulfilled and, um, that the, we're kind of keeping to those two legislative and executive roles.
Well, and I can give one example that I know of right now where, um, you know, Seattle city council passed a series of, um, edicts on their police department out of the protests. And there's something, um, called the Public Employee Relations Commission, PERC. And PERC oversees all these, um, state employment agreements. And PERC actually issued an order, um, saying you cannot have these directives. This is illegal. They are a, a bargaining condition. So, you know, it, it sounded real simple. The cities, you know, the city council said, you can't wear, I think it was certain tactical gear. Don't, don't quote me on all of this, but there were some edicts that came down and PERC jumped in immediately, um, and said, nope, you can't do that. And, um, the only other thing I've heard of that might also is kind of this, what they call past practice. And so you kind of have to know the history of the contract and how it's been interpreted. Um, so a lot of times, you know, when there's things being done, you need to know how they were handled previously before you make that decision. Cause then they can come in and say, you're violating pa- past practice. Um, that's an unfair labor practice. So it gets real tricky. Um, but I know that, that Seattle decision came down and that was, it was interesting to me because, you know, the council isn't thinking it's violating a labor agreement by, um, telling their police department how they want things handled, but they actually were according to PERC.
Council member Napplin has a question.
I just want to address the comment about promotions. I, I think there's, uh, kind of some, uh, information surrounding that to provide, uh, context. So what the situation we're talking about is let's say we're talking about dog catchers and an organization has two regular dog catchers and two senior dog catchers. And that's all that's been budgeted for. That is in the budget, authorized positions, two regular dog catchers, two senior dog catchers. If the mayor decides, I really like these two regular dog catchers. They've been here a long time. I'm going to make them senior dog catchers. We didn't budget for senior dog catchers. They were not authorized in the budget. That's being called a promotion when really we don't have, those positions aren't available. Those, a senior dog catcher will become available when one of those people leaves. And then you could promote someone into that position, but there's no open position to promote them into. And there's no collective bargaining that says, if you work here long enough or if we like you, or if you pass a certain number of tests, we're automatically going to promote you into being a senior dog catcher. There's only so many positions authorized via the budget and via council ordinance of the budget. So I just wanted to provide clarification that I don't, council deciding what positions are authorized is part of our legislative duty is my understanding. And so I, I guess I'm trying to understand, are we not allowed to say what positions are available? And you see where I'm running into trouble here? I mean, if we don't, if those positions aren't budgeted and aren't authorized, that's legislative decision to decide who, you know, how many positions we have and what they are.
Well, and again, I'm not, I, I, I'm not an expert, but generally there's FTEs, like a city has so many FTEs and then the executives decide where people land within those employment areas.
Hey, go tell dad.
So I'm not, I, I don't know, um, you know, if it's absent collective bargaining, like I go to my board and I have certain positions, but how I promote employees is generally up to me as the executive. Um, and so unless I'm creating, you know, a whole new position, I mean, making people go into senior positions or something like that, I don't have unions, so I can't speak to that. Um, but normally, um, that's handled in the executive role. But again, I don't know, I can't speak to your budget, um, how employees, you know, are, begin to be allocated for. Um, but my experience is that normally that's in the executive area regarding, um, where people fall. And as long as there's an open position, it's up to the executive, um, how that works. So.
My, my point is there wasn't an open position and I don't, I don't know, maybe, uh, our attorney could look into that more carefully, but there was a change in our law that matched similar cities have a similar way that they do it. And it was, it went through attorney review. So, um, I just, I, I, it's strange that this is being brought up because it, it did get attorney review and so I'm a little bit confused.
Well, why, why don't we take that offline and continue the, the training and we can have further discussion on that?
Can I make one point of clarification? Is that for the public record and councils aware, they were reclassifications and promotions into positions with competitive process internally? Then council passed the, the procedure. So that's why I asked the question, uh, because in my experience, um, that's not normal for cities and we haven't been able to do the full research on cities and get different perspectives outside of our city's jurisdiction. Um, it's important for me to have that information on what is typical practice.
And I'll defer to Daniel on that because again, I'm just speaking in general terms and I'm, I'm speaking only from my, um, experience as, as an executive director, how I've handled it and how I see it. But, um, again, I can't speak to legality on something like that. Okay. Um, harassment and discrimination, uh, this is an area, as you know, um, that has received a lot of attention and rightfully so in, um, the last several years. So what I would say is you as council member should know the law. You should know, um, your city's policy with regard to harassment and discrimination, what's acceptable, what's not acceptable and how employees can report, uh, harassment. And what I would say is if you haven't been to a harassment training in a while, it's worth taking one. Um, there's, you know, there's harassment, which is, you know, your kids are, you know, at each other and somebody says, you know, he's picking on me. Well, you have to know what's illegal harassment. Sometimes just being picked on isn't necessarily illegal. It's usually because of a It's usually because of a protected class, because I'm female, because I'm of a certain race, because I'm of a certain religion. That is how the law works. So there are times when you need to know what is illegal under the law and what do your policies require. So what I would tell you is WCIA has harassment discrimination training online. Not how to harass and discriminate, but anti-harassment discrimination. And I would, you know, you can go on our website and see when they're offered or, you know, they're, they're offered everywhere. Again, I would get a copy of the policy if you haven't seen it because you're held to that same policy. If you witness behavior that you believe violates that policy, you need to report it to the mayor immediately. So if you see something, you are pregnant with that knowledge and that imparts liability to the city. I've had situations where employees have gone to council members and said, I'm being harassed and discriminated against, but I don't want you to do anything about it. I just want you to know. The problem with that is that you cannot ignore it. So I've had people come to me and my career and said, I'm being harassed by X employee, but I don't want you to do anything. And my answer to them is, I unfortunately have to do something. I am in a position where I can't just ignore it. And I let that person know, I'm going to keep it as confidential as I can, but I am going to report it or I am going to take some action. So what I would say is if you know of, if someone comes to you immediately, you let them know you will be reporting it to the mayor. Generally, your policy will have who people can report to, and there's usually diff, more than one person. So in my organization, if it's, you know, a complaint, it goes to HR. If HR, if it's about HR, it comes to me. And if it's about me, it goes to my board. So there's usually chains so that it's, you know, there are ways that employees can report it. If you see behavior amongst each other, make sure that you talk to your fellow council member and say, this is unacceptable. We have had situations where a mayor was, you know, touching on employees quite a bit. And employees were very intimidated by this and they didn't like it. And, but all, the council members saw it going on and thought, well, that's inappropriate. But nobody said anything. So eventually we got claims from those employees. And, and the council member said, yeah, we, we all saw it. Yeah, we knew it was going on. And then you have the, but that's just, you know, so-and-so. That's not okay. And at some point you need to say, hey, it's not okay to touch employees. And they're probably feeling intimidated and cannot feel comfortable asking you to stop. So I would encourage you again to know what the law is. And I would encourage you to take a role in making sure it doesn't happen with one another. And if you see it in employees, to let the mayor know right away. There's also some interesting law that's come down with third parties too. So there, there are, you know, when the UPS guy comes in and people are maybe catcalling him, and if you see that, that is also workplace harassment. So it's not just employee to employee. It can be employees to third parties as well. So, so be aware of that. That's kind of a new nuance. Any questions?
Yes, I have a question. We, I think as all cities do, you occasionally have a constituent who's verbally abusive and harasses employees and elected officials. And in the past, we, we have one in particular that's quite prolific. And trying to, how do we effectively protect staff from those individuals when they refuse to respect the, the wishes of the mayor, that you be contacted directly instead of emailing them and attacking them for things and calling them names?
That, that's a big question because you have your constituents. But I think what you're doing is saying, we're directing you to the mayor. And then your employees know that if they receive an email, they're to forward it to the mayor and the mayor will respond. I think that is pretty much, you're, you're on the right track with that. That's saying there's one person that will take your information. We did have some litigation on something like this. And the person, they, they basically shut down communication with city staff. And then at one point said, you know, we're, we're going to take out, and, and this was surprising. I've never seen it was that bad. They took out a restraining order. And the person filed a First Amendment lawsuit saying, you're violating my First Amendment right. And the court actually held that the city took reasonable steps and had a good record of what they were doing. And his threats got to the level of danger and that they had the ability to protect their staff and themselves from a danger. I mean, he was threatening, you know, shooting sitting hall and stuff like that. So I think having the record and enforcing that there's one point of contact and, and employees know that they don't have to respond to those emails is very helpful. Daniel, did you have any advice on that?
So yes, super tricky situation. I think that there are so many different ways that, or scenarios that this could come up and each of them is a little bit different. For example, with an open public meeting and how that person would be interacted with if they have a pending permit or application of some sort with, with the city, how they should be interacted with. But, but if they're simply emailing, you know, staff, it sounds like that would be exactly what I would recommend is just funnel that communication to one individual that would be the point person. They, they don't have, as far as I know, any right to contact specific people and talk to them at the city. But cutting them off certainly is, you know, a, a larger step. And then if they're in an open public meeting, making sure that they have the same rights to be at that open public meeting. And if there is an opportunity to provide comment, they have that opportunity, subject to the limitations for interrupt, interrupting the meeting and whatnot. So it just kind of depends. And I've, yeah, I've, I've run into that in, in a number of different situations. And an individual that had a restraining order against somebody that came to council meetings. They wanted to come to a council meeting. And so it can get very nuanced and challenging. But I think the, the best thing to do is to provide one avenue that is safe for whoever's doing it and that allows that to, to occur so that they still have access to their government.
Were there any other questions? Okay. Next slide. It's a little something called negligent misrepresentation. And so I'm going to explain it to you and then I'm going to give you an example because I think the example makes more sense. So with negligent misrepresentation, what this means is that if you, as a city council member, make a specific promise or assurance to someone, that they rely on that promise and assurance, and it was wrong, and they have damages because of it, you could have what's called a negligent misrepresentation. So the example I'll give you is one of our cities, their downtown area is all cedar shingle siding. And it's by code that it's, you know, you must have cedar shingle on the side of your building. One day, a business owner came in, had a meeting with the mayor and said, I can't afford to redo the cedar shingle. Is it possible for me just to take it down and just put up regular planks or stucco? And the mayor said, well, we really value you as a business and I understand how expensive cedar shingles are. Go ahead. You can put up the stucco. So he puts up his stucco wall, takes down the shingles, starts putting up his stucco wall. And what do you think happens? Code enforcement comes out, slaps a stop work order and says, you can't do that. You must, you know, do cedar shingle. And the business owner says, but I talked to the mayor and he told me I could do this. And I have these people out here now that's costing me money and I already bought the supplies. So what do you think happened? Well, he filed a claim because the building official said, nope, you gotta take it all down and you gotta put up cedar shingle. So who paid for all of the product, both the installation and uninstallation? It was WCIA because there was a negligent misrepresentation made by the mayor to that business owner. So what I would say is be very careful about specific promises or assurances. And sometimes, you know, for me, it would come up in claims where someone would have a sewer backup. They would call their elected and say, I've had this horrible sewer backup. And the elected official says, don't worry, we'll take care of everything. And then I get the claim and I realize the sewer backup was in that homeowner's line, had nothing to do with the city. Or one, I had the contractor, actually a contractor was out and put something in the sewer line. And that's what caused the clog and the city wasn't going to pay anything. But because those council members made that assurance, we were in a very tough position and an embarrassing position for that council member because we were telling their citizen, we're not taking care of anything because we have to be liable. It has to be our fault. So what I would say is if you get specific questions, first of all, I mean, my standard answer is, if I don't know, my standard answer is, I don't know. However, I know who can get you the answer. And that's where you want to refer it to staff. So if a citizen comes to you and says, I have a question about this development regulation, you can say, you know what, I don't have the answer, but Laura has the answer. And I can refer you to her or whoever on her staff can answer that question. Do not take matters into your own hands because, again, you could create assurances. You can create situations and it could completely be in violation of the code or the wishes of the city. And so, again, I think the best thing to do, and a lot of you will get questions from your constituents, is to say, I don't know the answer, but let me forward it to the appropriate staff person. And then you can always check in, hey, staff, did you follow up with that citizen? Yes, I did. Okay, thank you. And then you're not getting involved in that issue and your expert staff is the one that's answering those questions. Any questions on this one?
I'll just quickly chime in as Laura's looking at the screen to see if there's questions. What this, what this doesn't preclude council members from doing is having an opinion and, and stating that, you know, in a council meeting and having a fruitful discussion on all sorts of things. And just because you say, I want this to happen or I'm going to try to make this happen in the context of deliberations on whatever it is at a council meeting, you, you're certainly allowed to do that. And you're certainly allowed to talk to your constituents outside of a, a public meeting and be that elected representative, as long as you're not doing what Ann just described as making those specific promises and assurances, you know, like, I'll look into this. I'll bring this to council. You know, I look forward to the discussion on this with my fellow council member. Oh, you know, you're, you're supposed to be the person that kind of drives things forward in certain ways, as long as you're not making those specific promises or insurances.
Councilmember Napland, I'm sorry, not councilmember, councilmember Lingle?
Yeah, I have a question. It's, it's not inconceivable that you can find yourself in a situation where information given to a constituent by a city employee is factually incorrect. You are not in a situation where you are supervising that individual. You can bring that to the attention of their supervisor, mayor, whoever, whatever the structure is. And you find yourself in a situation where you are caught between your role as a legislator, you're not the administrator, and a constituent who has factually incorrect information. How do you resolve a situation like that? Because you, you are not in a position, even at a director level, to influence their employment.
Well, I, I think you'd answered it by referring it to their supervisor. And, you know, if, what you're saying is the, you know, the constituent is saying, I got factual incorrect information, well, that's when you refer it to that person's supervisor or the mayor. And then you can say, I brought it to the attention. And that's what you're telling your constituent is, I understand that you believe, you know, I understand that you have concerns. I brought it to the attention of, you know, their supervisor. Or I brought it to the attention of the mayor. And so that's where, I mean, again, I don't want to get into specifics, but there are always interpretations. And, and Daniel will agree, in the law, there's the law. But if you ever watch any type of appeal, everybody has a different opinion as to what the law is. And I don't mean that to be unkind, but things can have interpretations. And so that's where I, you know, I, again, I think it's sometimes interpretations are made and people, you know, have a differing view. That's not unusual.
No, I understand that. I'm talking about a situation which is clearly not factual.
So I, I guess.
I guess the answer to that is that there's nothing you can do.
Well, I'm saying bring it to the attention.
Well, you can't, if, if, if they choose not to do anything about it, there's nothing you can do. I mean, that's the simple answer. There's nothing you can do. And that, we have to tell the, all you can tell the constituent is, I brought it to the attention of whatever, whatever the hierarchy is. It could be a city manager, it could be administrator, it could be a mayor, be any, any combination, I guess. And there's nothing further I can do. That's all you can really tell the constituent.
And I think that's the appropriate thing. Daniel, did you?
Two, two quick things. I mean, in, in that situation, what I would encourage you to do is think as, as a representative of, of the city as a whole, don't say things like, you're totally right, they lied to you, you're getting the raw deal here and I can't do anything about it. I tried. You know, what, what, the way you described it, I think would be good is I, I'll bring that to their supervisor or to the mayor, to the director, whoever. And then you work in-house to try to, to figure that out. And I guess the, the thing that I most often see in situations like being described here is the question that is asked gets the question that, that it matches it. And not always is the question that was asked the correct question for what they're seeking. And I find that all the time. I've had other clients, to remain unnamed, that I would have council members or staff reach out to MRSC or sometimes WCIA and ask a question about something that is important to them. And then come to me and say, I've been told I can do this. And here's the email that says that I can do this. So we're going to do this, just to let you know. Rather than to save cost or whatever, and that's fine. But when I scroll down and I see the question, I would say, well, I think that is actually accurate for the question that was asked, but what you're trying to do is actually a little bit more nuanced and a little different. And that changes the answer. And I think oftentimes with the public, they may say, you know, this is wrong. I didn't get right information. But it's because of either their understanding of the topic is incomplete or different than is appropriate for the question asked, or they asked the wrong question. And that happens all the time. Like they said, I couldn't do this. Why can't I do it? And then you realize that, oh, the tree's actually in a wetland or something, you know, whatever it is. And there's, there's so much nuance to a lot of these things that I think my default is to always just get more information. And so with that person is, you know, what's, give me the information and the background and the question. And, and, and I'll see if I can get the answer for it, rather than, oh, that you, you got the wrong answer. So of course, absolutely, it could be the situation where they were given the wrong information. That absolutely could occur. But I just wanted to make sure that the nuance to it often results in those situations.
Councilmember Bru Niki and then councilmember Remington and then the mayor?
Yeah, you know, over the years, what I find challenging with this is on occasion I will have people contact me, you know, through city email and request that I look into something for them, you know, something, it can be land, anything. And I always differ and say, well, this is a staff, this needs to be answered by staff. And then I try to give it to staff and staff's very responsive and sure. But then the individual wants me to participate in that meeting, like they're insistent on it. And I don't know why, you know, and I try my best to sort of like, well, the staff can manage that. And I feel, for me to participate feels uncomfortable because I'm only, I'm a part of a large body of seven. So I don't feel it's appropriate for me to inject myself in this thing that really is more staff-related. I guess is, is it, is it, if, if I do do that, is that kind of a liability?
Well, the question is, you know, are they looking to you to be their advocate? And that's not your role. I mean, your role is the city. And so as a council member, you, you are the city, the city is you. And so you're no different. And so, you're no different. What I would say is, you know, if the citizen's saying, I want you to participate, the answer is, that's, you know, you're right, that's not my role. And I'm not your advocate or any particular citizen's advocate. Staff is here to help its citizens, and that's the appropriate channel. You know, I am here to help get you to the right channel, and that's what I've done, but it is, it's, to me, involving in that situation, then if they don't get the answer they want, then you're involved in the litigation. Or, you know, then you can be looked upon as giving that bad information, or I thought the council member was going to do this or that. So, I mean, as uncomfortable as it may be, you know, I am the city, and I'm getting you to the right people at the city. I'm not an advocate or a judge of what's occurring.
Councilmember Remington?
Boy, it's really helpful discussion. We do have in our council procedures really clear direction that if we receive a question or a concern from a citizen, we pass that on to the mayor, to the appropriate person, usually a director. It is one of the more difficult things, I could say from my own experience, when a neighbor calls you and says, hey, guess what, you know? And you think, well, I think I can, you know, get the answer for you, you know, I mean, you just feel like that's the right thing to do, you're not giving them the runaround, well, here's another number. But the reality is, that's exactly the way we're supposed to handle it, as we passed on, the city manages it. That helps protect us from being involved, especially on the personal level. But on just a very basic human level, it's tough to say, well, no, I'm an elected official, I want to go get the information. But we, our rules make it clear that we should be passing that stuff on.
Mayor?
And actually, I was just going to say almost exactly what the mayor pretend just said, is that 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 exists, and it's very clear and specific within the existing council rules and procedures that were approved, I think, in 2013 or 15. So that is in the council procedures, and that's the way constituent issues are supposed to be handled. But if it's more than a hypothetical of someone, you know, kind of got an inkling of intentional misinformation or what have you, and we all know unintentional happens to our attorney's point, you get the question to the, the answer to the question you asked, not necessarily the answer you need. And so if that is going on, and it has gone on, then I would ask any council members that have experienced that to bring that specifically to me so that I can address that internally from a management level and look into any of those specific issues. But to date, I'm not aware of any.
Hey, Ann, Mike Remington, I just was looking at our time, we're at 6:44. How are we doing on our presentation?
Just a couple more, I got a lot more questions than anticipated, so-
Well, I appreciate your patience with us, thank you.
I have a few more slides, probably, I think I have about three more. One, two, yep, three. So I can shorten the last two because I think Daniel's going to talk about that, so I can do the two slides, and then the last two slides, I'll go real quick because I think Daniel's going to hit that one. So I will talk quickly and try and be respectful of your time. Oh, sorry?
Oh, that's fine, go ahead.
Okay. Somehow, I am not moving forward. Let me go next slide. There we go. I'll keep this one quick, defamation. Like Daniel said, you're there to legislate, you are there to have opinions, you're there to hotly debate topics. That's what it's all about, and you have quite a bit of leeway on that. The one area I caution you on is individuals. Be very careful if they are a public official, you may have some leeway, so, but it's still slim. If you want to, on a public meeting, accuse me as a public official of something, you may be able to, but again, I would be very careful. Staff and private individuals are completely off limits. You, any untruth can give rise to liability. So, again, I will say in general, if you're debating issues, but I think the easiest thing is to not get into debates about individuals at all in an open meeting. And you have something called executive session where you can have some discussions on personnel matters. But open public meetings is not the time. I won't give you my examples here, but I will refer you to some of the defamation litigation that went on against the city of Seattle, and the question of whether or not that was in the course of their duties when these defamatory statements were made. That can be very, very tricky. Elections that do not count in this. Every time I do this discussion about defamation, I'm reminded that in an election, you can defame your opponents all you want. So that's probably going on as we speak, I know there's a debate going on. In election season, you can defame anyone you want. So with that, I will move quickly unless, Daniel, you wanted to add something on this one? Okay. And then, sorry, the next one, oop, I went too far. The next one I really want to hit is something I need to educate you on, and I call this political engineering. So just so you're aware, the law in Washington State has something called joint and several liability. And what that means is that if a plaintiff is fault-free, they can make a claim against multiple defendants. If a defendant is at least 1% negligent, the plaintiff can collect an entire judgment against that defendant. So where this comes into play for WCIA and cities most often is in the area of road design. So what often occurs is that you have a tragic accident with significant injuries, and the causing driver doesn't have enough insurance to cover those injuries. So it's usually in crosswalks, signs, speed limits are usually the allegation. So you'll have, you know, someone killed in a crosswalk. The person who hit them is uninsured. And so they are looking at what we always call deep pockets to pay for their injuries. And because of joint and several, as long as a jury finds 1% of fault, the entire verdict amount is paid by that defendant. When it goes to trial, juries aren't told of this. Juries have no idea. So they allocate fault, but they have no idea that the plaintiff, who's fault-free, can collect against any party. So what these cases often come down to is what I call engineering malpractice. So what you're doing is they're pitting their engineers against our engineers. And what I find can be very unhelpful in this litigation is if I have a crosswalk, a sign, a speed limit that's imposed by political will rather than engineering science. And so that's why I call it political engineering. And I've seen it happen quite a bit. And what I would say is when you have a significant interest from citizens saying, you know, I want a crosswalk at that location, I'm just going to tell you right now, more people are killed in crosswalks than they are jaywalking. And that's the truth. The study after study will show you that. So what you have to make sure is that if citizens want crosswalks, that your traffic studies look at what are the impacts. Anytime you have a treatment to a road, it can cause conflicts throughout the channeling of traffic. So you want to make sure that it is in the appropriate area, with the appropriate lighting, and meets all warrants. There's something called the manual on uniform traffic control devices. The city will have its own standards. And you need to make sure that whatever treatment you put in is engineered and meets those standards. Otherwise, I can't defend it. And the last thing I want is to have someone killed in a crosswalk, and my defense is, well, because somebody thought it was a good idea. And they're going to say that, you know, you as a city should be better than that, and you should have had it engineered. When a something happens, avoid promises, assurances, and inflammatory statements. We had a case, very tragic case, and the council on, in public meetings said, we knew somebody was going to be killed there. Why didn't you slow this down? Why didn't you take action? And what happened is, we got a lawsuit. And the council members and the mayor were all called as witnesses at trial. The answer was, the person who was driving had the sun in their eyes and never saw this person in a crosswalk. There was zero accident history at this crosswalk, and it was designed appropriately. So, again, years and years of litigation, defense dollars spent, all because of statements made on the record that led people to believe it was dangerous. And so I would say, when you have a situation, refer it to your engineers. And I know it's difficult, but you just want to avoid those types of statements. So-
So I'm going to, yeah, I'm going to quickly, I'm going to quickly chime in on this one because I think this one's really important, and I've run into this in multiple different situations. And the two takeaways from that, and you said it very clearly, is think about, because all these discussions hopefully are in an open public meeting, but think about your statements as being exhibit one in that litigation, and that should give you pause. Maybe it's just me as a lawyer, but your statements, people, I've seen people get really passionate about rapid flashing beacons compared to not, or roundabouts versus traffic signals. And they say, you know, because they've, you know, been to Europe a lot, or they live near a traffic light, or they're, you know, whatever the reason, that, you know, somebody's going to die there if you do this, and you really got to do it this way. And it's like, whoa, like, don't go there. Make your statements, but don't have those inflammatory statements. We don't know, and I put myself in that category. I don't, I'm not a traffic engineer, I haven't studied all those things. And even if I go on Google and look around for statistics, you know, I can't say that. The traffic engineers that the city hires are there for a reason. And that gets my second point is, rely on the city's experts. They're your experts, and they've been hired, and that may be staff, and that may be a consultant that is brought in to do the analysis. But if they say that a traffic signal should be placed in a certain way at a certain intersection, that should be the city's position because that is the analyzed, data-driven, expert-driven result. And having people advocate for it to be 30 feet that way, or smaller, or bigger, or nonexistent, because it feels better for the community or for the people that are emailing them, could result in this type of liability where you're not doing it because the engineer is doing it. And it might be coming across, but I have run into this recently, so it can be very problematic, and we just always need to think in our heads, we have our city experts for a reason, number one, and things that we say on the record will be used against us. So just remember that.
I have a question. Councilmember Brunicki, you have a question? Because we're building parks, a lot of parks and such, and, you know, sidewalks too are coming in, does this kind of thing also apply to those types of engineered projects?
I can't say I see a lot of it, I mean, but there's definitely a liability on sidewalk. You know, for, I can't really say it's a road design or a high dollar that I've seen, but there's usually a negligence, and they'll bring about like a negligently designed park that, you know, or I've had ones where it's golf courses where balls go over certain areas because of negligent design. You have, parks have a whole series of standards too. And so that's the same argument for parks, is you have playground safety inspectors. I have staff that does playground inspections. And so that's also going to be used against you if it doesn't meet those standards. So I'd say in general, if there's a standard, you want to be following it. And it's usually engineered, and it's usually following, there's usually protocols somewhere that go about the design and the standard.
Thank you.
I can give council one really quick example of a park item that came up in the last couple of weeks. You have engineered play chips, and there's a certification process. And we actually had a developer put in play chips that didn't meet that standard, and we had to have them remove them and then put in the correct playground chips, because we do look at those types of things during inspection. Then those are the same chips that we use, so we go through the same process.
And then, oh, go ahead.
Amy McHenry here, sorry. So is it, is most of the liability danger lie more in specifics, saying, oh, I think we should have a stop sign here, or saying, you know, like you said, inflammatory statements, like someone could die? Or is it generally safe to say, oh, could we possibly look at improvements to this intersection in regards to safety? Are those generally okay things to say, or is it best to just speak? You know, just ask for input more privately, or, I mean, how does that, how does that work?
I would say it's safe for you to ask input offline. It's always safe. If you say, I'd like you to study, you know, could you look at this for safety? I've been contacted by constituents. They're concerned about speeding in this area, they're concerned. I think that's a good, I, you know, can you, and I would call. I'm a big one, and my next slide was email can be used against you in a court of law. So I think it's appropriate to ask. Now, what I will say is there is, you know, a lot of times, there is some discretion on how you allocate funds for safety improvement, so staff can identify, let's say, big projects. And there may be how you allocate the money as a council to address safety projects. There's something called discretionary immunity that may apply. So often, you'll see staff bring things to you in maybe a format of, you know, these capital improvement projects and the order, and some of that, you can get immunity as to how you spend your money. So there is always a need, and sometimes federal funds require safety studies. And if you are doing these studies under, you know, to get federal funds and you're creating lists, there's actually some rules that say those lists aren't used, can't be used against you in litigation. So, you know, this doesn't tie your hands from looking at problems and identifying problems. But again, I would say, if, instead of saying, constituents are saying somebody's going to die here, you're not going to say that. You're just going to go to the traffic engineer and say, hey, can you look into this? I've heard some feedback. And they may say, yeah, we've been looking at it. But also know that when things, you know, projects are brought to you, there's usually a prioritization, and the fact that they're bringing it to you also shields the city because you're making some discretionary decisions on how the money's spent.
Thank you.
Okay, I will zip through these and I will be over with. So I would just say, keep executive session information in exec session. Do not share. And the last slide is that you be mindful, and I know Daniel's going to go over this quite a bit. But I would say, I just want to warn you a little bit, there's been some new, this is all new law. And I just wanted to throw out that we actually had an interesting claim brought, and so I put this forward. A council member had a Facebook page, and the council member said, it's my private Facebook page, but was talking a lot of city business on it, and a person was posting on that page very objectionable comments. The council member blocked that person, and that person brought a First Amendment claim saying you created an open public forum by talking about city business. So we never got a clear decision. It was brought, the person kind of disappeared. But this is an area, I would say, all new, I know Daniel's going to talk about it. But it is definitely an area where there's people looking to create some new law. And so there's a couple decisions out there that are starting to feel some of this new technology. But I would say this is an area of caution, and I will let Daniel go into the specifics because I know he's going to later. So I thank you very much for your time, and I'm sorry that I went over. But I'd always like when I have a lot of questions, so thank you so very much.
Well, Ann, I just want to say thank you as well. Before we have Daniel start in, I get so much out of this. One, it scares me to death, something. But I've always referred to some wisdom from the Bible. One, it says, a wise person puts lock on their lips, and the other one says, a wise person sees trouble coming and avoids it. And tonight, you've really helped us focus in on some specifics that help us to avoid trouble. And it's easier to avoid it, I think, than to try to get out of it, what you're at it. I can tell we need to have you come back and spend more time with us. Thank you for educating us, for bringing your experience. And most importantly, I appreciate the very specific examples you gave. It allows us to relate directly to what others have done. And of course, we compare that to what we've done as well. So thank you for being here. So our next portion of this, and Ann, you're welcome to sign off and enjoy your night, you're welcome to stay with us.
Thank you, thanks so much.
Mike, before we start, does anybody need like a one or two-minute break in between?
I think that's really helpful at this point. I see we do have one other attendee, I don't know who that is, but we always welcome our citizens. Tonight's a training night. Let's go ahead and take a five-minute break. Daniel, are you okay with that?
I'm absolutely okay with that, and we'll remain respectful of the timeline and your, your time this evening. And if, if, if we have, you know, momentum for another session or something, we'll do that. But yeah, we're happy to take a break.
Let's take a five-minute break. So I show that it's seven oh two, so let's come back by about seven oh eight. We'll, we'll shoot for seven oh eight to be back here. So thank you, everyone. Laura, I have a question for you. If we decide, if we decide to extend this special meeting, can we do that tonight? By a council, I know we do that at council meetings, but on a special meeting, can we do that, you know? Or Daniel, maybe you have the answer.
I would ask Daniel, I am not an expert in Robert's Rules of Order. It is a special meeting, Daniel, and...
Yeah, you, you, you can extend it. You just can't take action on anything that's not on the agenda. Of course, we're not taking action tonight. And, and I'll leave that to you all. I, I know that this is two hours of your evening already set aside, so I'll leave that to the group on, on what you wanna do. I'm happy to circle back or whatever.
Yeah. Well, thank you for that. It really is council's decision. And I do appreciate that two hours out of the family time and, and all this stuff for everybody. Appreciate everyone's being here. But I'll just ask council, are you open to extending this this evening to be able to have a little longer discussion? Or would you like to end it? So if you just hold your hand up. Now, I don't see everybody with their camera on right now. I'm not sure we even have a quorum.
We'll need all cameras on for the discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I would just like to request in general that people keep their cameras on unless you're having a bandwidth issue. I think it's respectful to the speakers of all of our meetings to make sure that they see that we're focused as they do in a regular council meeting in person.
And I'll just also chime in that I know Jody wanted to make sure that we do that, just to make sure we always have a quorum, that we don't have people leaving the room or anything like that, so. Yeah.
Yes, Jennifer.
I just wanted to say that I was eating dinner, and I didn't think you guys might be eating, so.
This has been all dinnertime. I totally get it.
I can do that.
No, no.
Thank you, everybody.
Just like cover part of my face.
Just as you go up and down the fork, yeah.
I thought that was a part of the etiquette we had gotten, or had been told before too, that, you know, if we need to eat or drink something, it's more polite to turn your camera off, so.
Well, and ideally, we should be eating our meals around meetings that are open to the public, and not eating during meals, since we don't eat during meals when we're in person, eat meals in person. But I think it's completely acceptable to be drinking our water or pop or tea during the meetings.
So it's good to be everybody back. One of the things we were asking about is if council is okay if we extend this a little bit. We're probably half hour short of what we would have had. Is council okay if we extend the meeting? Well, let me just ask, could you hold your hand up if you're okay with extending it? Well, that looks like a majority, including the mayor. So Daniel, it really ball is in your court. If you're, if you're okay, then we'll plan on extending it at least a half hour, so we can have a little more robust discussion.
Sure, and, and of course, I appreciate that, and I know that this is started before dinner, going after dinner, family time and everything. So, you know, let, let's see where we get. And one of the first things that I was gonna say is that I, I view this as an initial conversation that will continue. So if there are things to discuss down the line, that's absolutely what I would hope, hope to see anyway. So what I did here is I actually, I put forward the idea of having these two trainings. One with WCI to provide some resources, and one with myself to provide a few observations that I've seen, and then have a discussion. I've got a number of questions for council members, for the mayor, and for staff to kind of lead to the discussion, to move things forward. And so the purpose is really to talk as a group, city council, mayor, and think about ways that we can work together to advance the city's interests in a productive way. So a couple of things, this is not intended to be a discussion of specific projects or specific scenarios, and it's not an opportunity to fingerpoint or anything like that. But it is an opportunity and a chance to talk about how we do business and how we address our goals of the city to move things forward. And again, like I started by saying, I think this would be the start of this conversation. And I know that you've had many conversations over the, the weeks and months and years that you've been on council or with the city to, to this effect. And so a few ground rules that I would like to put in place, and I hope you would agree to them, that we be respectful and productive at all times. Points should not be directed at any individual, but they, for the common discussion and to move forward the conversation. And that, similar to what you do in council meetings, is that each person has an opportunity to speak before we circle back to repeat comments. And then the comment goals are to move everything forward. So what I wanted to do is I wanted to share some observations that I had in here, I'm just adjusting my screen, of things that I've seen since I've started. And the reason that I wanted to share these with you is because I'm, I'm new to this group, right? And I don't have any history with, with any of you, really. And so what I think that does is it provides a little fresh perspective that I can contribute to the group that might shed light in a new way, because I know you all have been working together for a long time. So here are some of my observations. I think the first observation, that is a really positive observation, is that there is just a ton of passion with this group and the staff. I'm working with the staff on a daily basis, and then I work with council at council meetings and some phone calls and everything, and everybody's really passionate about the city. I have worked with different individuals, whether those are staff members or council members at other cities that don't have the passion for the city, and that, that does come across. And I think that leads to negative results. So I think you guys have great passion. You also have a lot of skills and experience. I've talked to different council members that have a ton of built-up knowledge, whether that's about the city or past experience from their work that they're bringing to their role. And then, of course, working with staff, having just a ton of experience in what they're doing to contribute to all the different projects and everything, and that is also a really good thing. And then the third thing that, that I think often gets lost, and we, we talk about this at our law firm, because I think it's really important, is that despite being in the middle of a pandemic, with, it just seems like every week, there's some other thing that gets tossed in, whether it's the fires or social justice issues, whatever it is. We're still getting through, and it's, it's a rough year, and I think that there's a lot weighing on people's shoulders right now. And so I think recognizing that we're getting through a really tough time and celebrating the wins together is really important thing. And so getting through this year, I think should be celebrated for everybody. The next observation is, and I've talked to staff just a tiny bit about this, but you guys have really jam-packed meeting nights. Hopefully not quite this one, but you guys do committee the whole, and then you do council meetings. And you have a lot on your plate on those nights. And so you're going for many hours on end, almost at a minimum, talking about things and then making decisions on things. And it seems like that can be a lot, and one of the things that I think we can talk about later is ways to possibly, and this is open for discussion, lighten that load on, on your shoulders, and maybe going to alternating weeks for those meetings, so that when you're focused on decision-making at a regular meeting, that you're focused on that alone, and you don't have other projects that are weighing from the hour and a half before. Just an observation that you have a lot going on in one night. So the, the third one, and I think we'll get into some comments and questions on this, and once I kind of roll through these, is generally speaking, the city council, and we talked about this in the last presentation, has a role in reviewing and proving contracts and setting budget, among a number of other very, very important things, but not supposed to be in the day-to-day operations of the city, in the administration of the city. So that could be from an RFP process to engineering or design of a project, which we just talked about as well. And that can lead to a lot of emails and communications with staff, which can take a lot of staff time. And I think it's really important to understand where those roles really should lie and how to interact with staff. With that said, if there are questions and concerns early in the process, there should be a process in place for city council members to learn about a project, have questions answered, and be involved early in the process before that decision, you know, point for city council. Because that's going to tee up a, a, a smooth and thoughtful process for council later down the line. So what we find is that we have to strike a balance between knowing that there is a defined role for a city council member on a contract, for example, that comes down the line, but then, of course, how does the city council member interact with that process earlier on? And I've got a number of questions that I'd like to tee up to dive into them. And, you know, being new, I just have to point it out, there is a fair amount of conflict and frustration that comes out during your council meetings. And as somebody that is new to the city, it, it caught my eye, and I'm just, wanna be totally blunt with that. And I think it would be useful, just from an outsider's perspective, to take a step back and to reassess how those interactions happen, and to have everybody, and, and I do mean everybody, recommit to professional interactions that are shortened to the point, so that, that everybody's perspective and opinion is included, but that it doesn't go beyond that to attacks or yelling or anything that would be unnecessary for that meeting. Disagreement always happens, and that, that's totally fine. I mean, it's supposed to happen. You know, these legislative decisions, these policies, politics, it, you're going to have disagreements. And, you know, the way that I put it in my notes for this one is, and it, and it perhaps breaks it down a little too far, but everybody should be able to state their opinion, and everybody should be able to disagree with everybody else, and then you vote, and then you move on to the next topic. That's how the legislative process is supposed to work. It's not looping back to always correct somebody. It's not looping back to get the win. And it's not, you know, owning that discussion. I should be able to say, on this topic, here is my opinion, and for these reasons, knowing that people after me and before me might say something different. And then I'm gonna vote the way that I wanna vote, because I have the right to do that. And then, and then being able to then separate and move on to the next thing. I've noticed a lot of talking over people, a lot of my information's the better information, or I have information that I need to insert. And really, it needs to, we need to get to a place where there is a more professional and almost methodic process to go through, to have everybody's opinion heard. And I'm absolutely not saying that somebody shouldn't express whatever they're feeling on that topic, or vote the way that you feel you should vote, or disagree with whoever you wanna disagree, and you can say that I disagree with that point. So there, there is absolutely no censoring or holding back of any of that. But it's doing it in the way that we can get through that meeting and get through those topics, knowing that there's gonna be differences of opinion. And, and so I, I think that, that was basically the, the end of my observations. And again, the reason that I put forward these observations is to try to provide, I, I know, I know I'm the city attorney, but an outsider's perspective to say, I just came into this not long ago, and I'm seeing these things very clearly and very quickly. And I think that there's so much for the city to do, for you all to do together, that talking about a few of these things to understand how we can move forward in a productive way is gonna be very beneficial. And I'll emphasize again, these are all my observations. I have not talked to a council member about it. I have not talked to the mayor about it. These are things that I put together. And you know, what I'd like to do now is I've prepared a number of questions that are both for council and for the mayor and for staff on how we can dive into some of these issues to find ways to facilitate what everybody needs out of these situations to get productive, good discussions, good outcomes, whatever those may be. And the one that I was gonna, well, first of all, does anybody have any questions on on where we're at right now? Okay, great. But of course, any questions anytime and we're getting to the discussion part now. So where I wanted to start was with council, and that's just where my notes are. And the first topic that I was going to start with was a question about what administration? And I mean this very broadly administration. Again, we're not pointing fingers at the mayor or any director, but what can administration do to better prepare the city council and individual members of the city council for items that will in the future come for consideration or discussion? And and the things that come to mind for me are status memos that could be individually emailed to all council, you know, like individual memos emailed. Memos kind of to the record that would be attached to council agendas. So maybe not something on the agenda, but an update on a meeting that happened or a project that's moving forward. Or taking things more often or more strategically to committee of the whole or to subcommittees and things like that, so that throughout the administration's process on something, city council is getting the information that will become useful to you in the future without that over involvement that we talked about in the last presentation that can have real ramifications. And so the question to you is, what what things would be useful to you? What what things? Councilmember.
So one thing I think that could be really helpful is if we could get items that we're going to be potentially voting on at the next meeting, if we could get them in a timely manner. It, you know, sometimes it's, and I know that everybody's so busy. So I'm not trying to be critical, but it seems like sometimes we'll get them late on a Friday or even we've, we have received things on Monday or Tuesday before a meeting. So just getting it puts me on overload when I see something that I have to read and understand by that next hour, you know, so just getting information as head of as far ahead as possible would be helpful to me.
Yeah, absolutely. I totally see where you're coming at with that. And fortunately or unfortunately, you guys have the three touch rules. So so you do have the opportunity to warm up to something, discuss something and then decide on it. Of course, if 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 they're for some reason looking for a decision right away and you get it last minute or or even just a couple of days before, that can make it certainly challenging. So more timely submittal of materials. Great. Thank you. Councilmember.
Something I really appreciate because sometimes the packets are very large with a lot of technical information. But when I first came on council, I remember during booth at the time would always give a pretty good summary of what to pay attention to, especially when we're talking about land use type things, very technical detailed stuff. So I could easily go to her, like you would say a memo, look at that. And then as I read my packet, I could process that. That would be real helpful because if there's nothing there and I come to a meeting, then I might be sort of thinking, hmm, somebody hiding something. You know, I might be thinking something like that. Or should I be paying attention to something here that's missing? So I think that's just a really good straightforward way to to get my attention, you know, staff. It's like literally highlighted yellow, hey, check this out or look at this or this might be important to notice as you're reading.
Great. I appreciate that. And a couple of hands popped up, just one quick comment on that. There was a council meeting. Man, maybe three meetings ago or so where there was a request for more information in the council pack or the agenda bill for a project that Steve had coming. And the next agenda that he had for it was more robust than the prior one. And I heard there were multiple comments from council members at that next meeting acknowledging that and saying how useful it was, kind of big picture budget for that project and the changes and everything. So yeah, making sure that the summary is full and complete so that you really can see how it's all working without reading the technical attachments. Councilmember Napland and McHenry, you both raised your hand.
So I would say something that helps me because I am kind of a detail person, numbers person, and a lot of times very pertinent information is only provided in the PowerPoint during the presentation. So I'm like frantically trying to read it. I can't read it. I'm taking notes. I can't listen at the same time. And it's just overload. And then that's our chance to provide our feedback. You know, as part of the touch so that we can give direction or provide our opinion. And I still am just, you know, bombarded by trying to process what I just heard with no time to sit back and really absorb it. And so I think what happens is we get either we're frozen and we can't think of, we haven't quite come up with an opinion about it, or it's reactionary opinion, which I don't think is productive. And especially when something has to do with a bunch of numbers. I mean, seeing a whole bunch of numbers up on the screen and it you only see it for maybe a minute and then it goes to the next screen. It's the point of even seeing those numbers. I can't, and I'm a math person and I I can't. You might as well not have the numbers there because I I just can't.
Yeah.
Intelligent opinion about it. And so anyway, just to have that information, the PowerPoints or something ahead of time. So we, because often there is information in the PowerPoints that are not in the agenda bill.
So so at a minimum, making sure that anything that's going to be presented in the PowerPoint is in the agenda bill so that you don't have to rely on the PowerPoint exclusively. Absolutely. And
And for me, if I have a question, I like to let whoever's presenting the item know ahead of time so they can be prepared. Because otherwise, then they don't even realize we're going to ask a question and then they have to answer a question on the fly. So if we had the information ahead of time, I think it would just go better as a meeting.
Okay. Councilmember McHenry.
Yeah, everyone's brought up really great points and I agree with a lot of them. I was thinking about that. I think you touched on briefly, that's important to me is being involved in a process early on. And it's because I just think of the efficiency of it all that if something is finessed to a point by staff, that's staff hours and maybe council has a different, you know, opinion on it. So early on, temperature checks on things that we're eventually going to be deciding on would be critical. And we don't always need a bright shiny polished product. Sometimes it's okay just looking at the raw details and try to get a, you know, quick temperature check with council. And then the other thing I would say, and this isn't laser focused in on meetings, but I find it because I'm a little bit more of a bigger picture thinker. It's good to know what's going on within departments. And I've seen some one off updates here and there. But just regular, I don't know, once a month, once a quarter, here's what's going on in police, planning, public works would be really helpful to me.
So that actually got to my next question. So 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 thank you for doing that. And and they're directly tied is, you know, how how should matters be daylighted? And and how should progress reports be made? And we kind of were touching on that, but in thinking back to our last PowerPoint presentation and to think about some of the observations that I had, knowing that there are, there is a council legislative role in the future and knowing that there's the administration's management of these different things that the city handles, but that will come, you know, for a city council touch at some point, whether it's a contract approval or what have you. Trying to find an appropriate agreed on process for how that gets daylighted, how that information gets passed along early enough that you're involved, but you're not, you know, ducking into the administration and potentially getting our, you know, the city in trouble with the things that we talked about. And so that's where I was touching on, you know, the different types of memos and updates and committee meetings where things could come so that you all have an understanding of, you know, in two months, you're going to approve a contract for this project. But we're two months before that right now. And and as administration moves forward with that process, rather than coming to you out of the blue with something that says, here's a contract, here's an agenda bill, prove it. You all want more information earlier. That's very clear and that's that's fine. But how do we do that in a productive way so that we're not bogging down the administration and the directors from moving those projects forward and doing what they're hired to do? But also giving you information earlier on in the process so that once you do get it, you are aware of it, comfortable with it. You don't have to have made up your mind. You don't, you're not going to be administering that process. That's not your role. But you want to, you want to be involved. You want to know what's going on with the city. And I think that's fine. And so I think the question would be councilmember McHenry, just like you said, you know, early on involvement and and information that can be done, but we need to strike that balance between, you know, trying to run the city and getting information for a legislative decision when it happens or a decision by the legislative body when it happens. And so would love to hear ideas on how we can do that. I have a client that on every agenda at the bottom is between two and six memos to council that will say, you know, that mayor met with the neighboring mayor about something or the fire chief there and the fire chief someplace else. They're discussing the levels of service or maybe the response to the snowstorm. Or it would be a memo on some project that's going along. Hey, FYI, we just broke ground on this and this is where it stands. And in a little while, you're going to get a design contract, you know, excuse me, some some way to, you know, feed information on a regular basis to make sure that you're getting the information you want. But that, you know, you're not becoming it. Excuse me, you're not becoming a de facto director, for example. Councilmember Lengel, you had your hand up.
Thank you. I think one of the things that I struggle with is that particularly with development, but it's not just development, is the format of the way information is presented to us. Development is an easy thing for me to describe. We really need to have a complete picture of the type of project, not just incremental a piece of it. And if we don't understand the total development cost of a project, meaning all categories and all funding sources, we are potentially putting ourselves in a situation where we are pre committing money. And we don't know the the real total cost. And so you get taken down a road that you may not be able to afford. And so I think that one of the things we can, I think there are things that other state agencies, state agencies actually do to move us in the direction of understanding the total development cost of a project, not just a public work, but any type of project or larger study that will define all the components of that work and where it's going to be paid for. And then that way we can track that those expenditures all the way through the the project evolution. Because what we have now is a series of agenda bills, wording changes, numbers change. It it becomes very confusing. And so if you try to go back and reconcile, it becomes increasingly difficult. And it's just the old format. It's just the old way of doing things. And we're a bigger city moving into the bigger city. And so we need to get a little more structure around how we present information so we can track things all the way through. And that's been my biggest frustration, I think, in being on council is that we don't have we don't have that framework with information.
Sure, I appreciate that definitely. And I and I think, not to put words in your mouth, but I think that was one of the things in that agenda bill that Steve changed for the second meeting that that was improved was that it was kind of complete cost analysis, you know, so that that big picture was there. And, you know, the the more that we put into an agenda bill, the more time and effort it takes for a director. However, that's more information that will hopefully eliminate the need for the offline questions and the repeated touch. So that's, this is the exact example of kind of the balance that I'm looking to to learn and to to discuss with you is something exactly like that. So I appreciate that. Councilmember Iyer.
So I think one of the things that I've been seeing is definitely get how we landed on the three touch historically. I think a lot of it's, I guess, is somewhat of an assumption, but I think a lot of the day to day business occurred in a similar manner and in terms of capacity and ability to kind of pull things together, council packets, that type of thing. And, you know, which led to a state seemed to seem to me to led to a state where we, you know, the three touches was essentially kind of a cushion on, if you get a council packet on Friday or something that you can rest assured that that you're going to have time to look at it and you're not going to be in a position where you're going to have to, you know, pull the trigger that Tuesday. But I think, and I think rightfully so, the three touch, the three touch rule is cumbersome in that some things are routine and nature and you know, should be able to be be able to be executed, you know, quickly or in one meeting. But I think the balance is, it's kind of a, you know, a re recalculating of the timing, you know, it's like, are we going to, I think, I feel like we're like trapped between the three touches and then the packet timing. And it's like, I feel like we, if we want to go one way, we need to work to have timing improve on packets. And I think council could commit in a, you know, in a, you know, meaningful way to be like, okay, well, if we could get, you know, as we've shown before with the touches, I think we're we're okay to suspend the rules. I just think that sometimes there's apprehension when you feel the that we're in a position where we have to do this and we we're unreasonable if we don't suspend the rules when I feel like those rules were put in place for the for the circumstances that we are in understandably, in in terms of timing and preparation, which makes sense. So I think it's like, I feel like maybe three touches excessive, maybe two touches is, you know, a better place, but I feel like we have to break either way. Either we commit to going one touch on some things and like, hey, then let's get the packets the week before, like literally a full week. And then, okay, then that's, I think it's game on. Everybody, I think, for me, I guess, that's reasonable. But if we we aren't, then it's like, okay, well, then it's reasonable to be like, hey, we're not comfortable to say, you know, I mean, maybe we got to get more comfortable saying, yeah, I'm going to have to touch it again. So and be with that. And and I guess not not seeing that if there is not a shift in the delivery of packets, I think alls I would ask for is the grace to you know, is that and is that when we just are dead silent on the issue, we just move on and and that's, there's, you know, that we're not gonna that just, I guess that's how we do it now. It's that uncomfortable silence that conveys that we're going to touch it again and we're going to wait. Whereas it's annoying and it's frustrating, but that's the system we have now. And unless we substantially change the timing, I think that's what we've got. So I think that's maybe what's frustrating both of us.
Sure. So Yeah, well, and I think you brought up a good point that expectation setting on when things will be the three touches versus moving things quicker than that really is important because one or four council members may just assume that something's going to get another touch and not be at a point where they're ready to make a decision but ready to have it on the agenda. And other council members may be like, well, this could totally go in one touch. I reviewed it. It's fine. And if people don't know that that's the momentum on something or in that category, then you may have then you, you may have certain people that are more prepared to move it quickly than others. And nobody should feel pressure to move something quickly when you, when you do have that rule. But of course, creating a category of things that do move quicker is, is, is pretty challenging to do. Mayor Okerlander.
Yeah. And thank you, Councilmember Iyer, because you brought up some good points, but I will provide a little bit of historical background. And part of the three-touch was definitely to make sure council had a review, but when, when Councilmember Bernicki and I were on council years ago, it was because administration was forcing votes on major policy on the first touch. We're well beyond that at this point. Um, so I know in the past, we've encouraged council to update the rules and procedures. And I think that at this point, if council can get together and decide what you're okay with, or delegate the authority to the mayor pretend to decide what's one touch versus consent versus what's more touches, I think that can really simplify the process. And there can be, you know, on the agenda bills, it can be, you know, there's, there's a spot that actually says what the action is expected that evening. So we can use that process to simplify it, to, to really start to move those things along if needed. But, you know, we, it's, it's council's rules on that. And so if council wants to change it, I know that it would make our staff very happy because there are a lot of things that they think should go on consent agenda that don't. And we're just following the procedure that exists today.
Councilmember Iyer.
And I, I guess I would say at the crux of the thing, if we're getting packets on Friday, I don't think it's reasonable to change rules to create an expedient, more expedient process. So I think it's, I mean, there's a, I guess as a council member, that's where I'm at in terms of like, I, I'm totally for that, but I think it needs a system where we get packets, you know, a week in advance. And I think, I, I think without one, there can't be the other.
I, I took.
That's just to be, I mean, I don't, that's where I'm seeing it.
I mean, that, that makes a lot of sense to me. I mean, I, I have clients that have, you know, a sometimes unfortunately rigid schedule for, you know, internally within administration, you know, the, the item gets sent to the mayor on the prior Thursday, gets reviewed by the mayor and sent to the clerk on the Monday, and then it gets published on the Tuesday for the following Monday meeting. And if something doesn't hit those deadlines, any of them, it doesn't get on the agenda because, well, I have one client that everybody always says the word transparency in every sentence that they say. So for transparency's sake, you gotta have everything there that much early because it's, it's for you all, but it's also for the public, you know, you, you want the public to be able to spend a little time with these things. And so what I'm hearing there is, you know, considering how many touches with packet timing and that seems totally doable. And that's just going to be a matter of trying to figure out what makes the most sense for those. Uh, Councilmember Bernicki, you had your hand up before I started.
Yes. And in regards to the idea of, you know, getting that packet on a Friday and stuff, maybe you had suggested earlier that we do have some very packed agendas with important things. And, and I think what we run up against is when the staff is having to prepare some of those, because sometimes the, the volume of stuff that has to come in that I have to plow through is immense. And so maybe thinking about how we plan the agendas out, as you had mentioned, to lighten the load a little bit. So like, if we have a big consideration that, you know, would require three touches and stuff, we don't want to put like three of those kind of items on the agenda. And, and that way, we can mitigate that better. And that way it gives the staff the ability to get that to us in a timely fashion as well as gives us the time to review it appropriately.
Yeah. So, so balancing agendas to make sure that it, that can even meetings. I know that's always easier said than done, you know, for when things come up and, and how things need to flow. But certainly appreciate that. You don't need three big public hearings that are gonna have to go through a big process in the same night. So yeah, balancing agendas. Council, Councilmember McHenry, did, I'm sorry, did you have your hand up?
No, I didn't. But if, I could just echo, you know, what you said, sometimes we have really full agendas and some nights not so much. And it seems impossible, but maybe there's some way we could balance some a bit better. And one other quick thing about our COW meetings is when we have really big things that are going to be huge discussions, rather than having presentations on other items in the COW, maybe we need to still save like 20, 30 minutes in the COW, just to have a little quick discussion about some things that might, we need more time with everyone.
So why don't we just quickly pivot, pivot to that? How does the group feel about having back-to-back COW and regular council meetings? Does that work for people? It, it seems like a lot, seems like a lot of big discussions are on one night. And by the time you get to the last couple of agenda items on the regular meeting, that's a lot. What do you think? Oh, that was a lot of hands. Councilmember Iyer, I think I saw yours first.
Yeah, it's a, it's a lot. I mean, speaking of, you know, eating or going to the bathroom, I'm not sure when you're supposed to when we're in these meetings. Like we literally go from one to another. And, you know, I work, so I get home from work and I, you know, and it's like, it's a little different now that it's online, but it's a little much. And I think in terms of, but that's, you know, that's part of the gig, you know, that we signed up for. But at which I think it's not gonna, you know, completely crush me, but I think in terms of process, as we've, as I've discussed before in the past, you know, we lack the mechanism to have something on a consent agenda, agenda. And I, I've brought this up one other time before, is that if there was a, you know, an iterative process to, you know, prior to a, you know, a COW happened some other time, or you could say, is this, you know, is this something that you could be on a consent agenda or could take one touch, you know? And we just don't have that built into a process. So we go through every single thing. So I'm not sure how that works, but I'd be game for splitting things up, I guess, in general.
I mean, and I, I bring up the question knowing full well that, you know, taking it to other nights just means more impact to, to your personal life. So, so I'm absolutely not trying to push, push that. But, you know, I do find, I have some clients that go from 5:30 PM until midnight. And there is no question in my mind that they are not doing their best work from about 9:30 on, maybe 8:30. Particularly during budget season. So, so those things can, I think that's whether you're studying for a test or whether you're doing important work for the city. So I think that's good. Yeah. So for consent agenda, I think that's a great point and I'd love to learn a little bit more about that. Frankly, I'm not too sure how that works with you guys. So, so I'll look into that. And Councilmember Bernicki, you had raised your hand there.
Yeah, I was thinking that, you know, sometimes as the topics are something I really like to think about, there's a presentation in the COW and then it's kind of a topic and that you really want to think about in process. And then we go right to our meeting and you kind of lose track of all that. It might be good to consider maybe one of the, we would add one Tuesday for COW instead of putting it before the meeting or two Tuesdays if people want to. I mean, to me, Tuesdays are just pretty much city business. But, you know, taking a Tuesday and making that the COW one, once a month, maybe it might be a little longer COW, but then we can get those presentations on and have a, have our discussion and not be bombarded with trying to do that and the heavy stuff on the meeting. Maybe that might be a better solution.
Sure, absolutely. And of course, for, for you guys to decide, that would, that would be a great opportunity to tee up things that will be coming down the line rather than getting, you know, four hours worth of information just straight back-to-back. But, okay. Councilmember Hoag.
Well, if I remember right, early on, when I started on the council, we had a lot of presentations that took place during the council meeting and we had less during the COW and more discussion, remember, right? And it just seems like some of the presentations could be moved to the council meeting possibly. And then our COW meetings, we wouldn't have to have to a month, or, yeah, to a month if, if it was just for discussion, just an idea.
Sure. Uh, Councilmember Napland.
I really like that idea that Councilmember Hoag had. I really value that the COW is a time, it's like our, our only time where we can all talk together. And the council meeting is more formal, the COW is less formal. And so, yeah, if we spend most of that time passively, just listening to presentations, it doesn't seem like as well. And I, that maybe is a good idea to have, you know, more in-depth conversations about what direction we're going or what's coming up, or, you know, how we feel about things and do it once a month and have it and not try to do that right before a council meeting. Because Dan Bernicki is correct, like you're, you know, you just had this really deep conversation. You're kind of mulling it over and then boom, you're like, do I want to approve this contract? I don't know. So, you know, it's, uh, yeah, you kind of are in a different mindset when you're in a council meeting. And if you just had a really intense conversation about something, it can be, can be challenging.
So, so I think what that does is that actually kind of connects back to my earlier question, my second question, which was, you know, how, how do we get council members information earlier on in the process so that we're not getting individual emails and, you know, involvement in city administration earlier on, but you are getting the information. So it's not cutting you out of the process. It's just finding that appropriate avenue to have those discussions and communicate that information. And so if COW was used in a way for council and council administration discussions to talk about things that are coming up and, you know, getting the information that you would be otherwise looking for in those one-on-one conversations that can really add up for a director to, to, to manage. And so using COW in a more interactive and informative way would, could be a way to, to get that information earlier on. Council, Councilmember Lengel, you unmuted. Yeah.
Um, yeah, this is a, a big observation, I guess. And I've said this a number of times to individuals, mayor, everyone, is that we have a lot of work to do. And I really struggle that I feel like there needs to be more prioritization of work. And if we understood, if we had agreement on the prioritization, then you could use a COW much more effectively. But when you're, all of us, you know, I mean, administration as well as council, when everybody is pulled in so many directions without prioritization, it means that, it, it means that you will be doing your work in a way that is much less likely to be impactful or complete. And in my mind, we have, we have legally responsible things we have to do. And everything else is secondary to that. If that means that every so many years, we have to update shoreline policy, then that needs to be understood. It needs to be budgeted for. It needs to be planned for. And all of that flows into how our agendas are shaped, how a COW is shaped, the timing of all of those things. But when you have so many things competing for that airspace, what ends up is we, I think probably we've all kind of chuckled a bit at the ongoing parking lot list, which never gets completed. And we just, we will never get it completed because we just don't have a means right now to collaboratively prioritize our work. And that is very frustrating to me. And if I, I don't mind spending a lot of time on my city work, but it really bothers me if work is not prioritized because then it just seems to go into a vacuum. And I don't think that is accountable to the public, quite frankly. I think we'd do much better if we focused.
Sure, absolutely. And I think that, well, number one, yeah, you guys absolutely have a lot going on. And I would say that the kind of council priorities or to-do list for agendas at every city that I interact with, which is quite a number, is always full. It's always full. There's, there's those things that you talk about that come back every single year, multiple times a year. And then there's the things that come up because lo and behold, you run into a pandemic, you know? So, so there is a lot of that that comes up. But I think when you talk about priorities, there are two sets of priorities. There's the legislative priorities and then there's the administrative priorities. And, you know, the mayor has the responsibility to manage and oversee the administrative priorities. And you all as council members as a group have the responsibility to manage the legislative priorities. Those intersect in very meaningful ways very often. So I don't mean to say that they are not interrelated. But what we need to make sure is that we're looking at our set of priorities, items to prioritize. What council shouldn't be doing is prioritizing planning department. Planning department has staff and a director that that's, that's their job to do and to, to bring that forward to you. And there could be situations where you feel like something, you know, could have been, you know, shifted in a different direction. And, and that might be the case. And, and that's on administration to, to, to manage those, those needs of the city and those expectations and to use your time wisely without question. And then also for both sides to understand where those things come together. For example, like we talked about earlier, prioritizing and managing the three major updates to code that are required by law, those shouldn't all come at one time. And that's a, that's kind of a mutual prioritization of how we're going to use our time, how we're going to use your time at a council meeting or a COW. But what we don't want to have happen is individual council members or council as a whole prioritizing the administration of the city for administration and vice versa. The council meetings are yours. You know, if, if you want to have a discussion on something, you get that on the agenda and you can have that legislative discussion about what is pressing from, from the legislative side of the, of the table. And that's just as expected as, as vice versa. So when we talk about prioritization, you know, we just got to make sure that we balance those two sides for sure.
Can I just add something that?
Absolutely.
To me, the prioritization is also driven by the budget process. And that is where the meaningful intersect needs to happen. And if, if administration wants to do something and they put it into the budget proposal, that is where council deliberates it and it decides if it's, I'm not talking about whether Laura Thomas is doing XYZ things over here with her employees. I'm talking about policy. And if, if, if the mayor wants to change XYZ policy and we agree with that in the budget, we allocate time, resources to get that policy changed. And then my expectation is in that two-year period or whatever deadline we set in that budget process, that that work will be accomplished. And there will be a verification that that work is done. To me, that's an accountable system.
Sure. Yeah. I mean, the, the, the budget is the largest policy document for the city. And that starts with the mayor and gets approved by council. It's a very interactive and collaborative process.
Right.
And I, I would just say, again, nothing in, not all things in budgets get done. That, that would be amazing and wonderful if it did. And within the scope of what is budgeted and what is put forward at the end of that budget process, that's where that prioritization comes in, right? So you've got a list of things that need to get done. There's money allocated for it. Everybody's talked about it. Now administration has to go and get it done, right? And, and it doesn't always, again, not everything always gets done because there's a lot of things that come up. And obviously the, the prime example is pandemic or whatever, you know, a flood or whatever, a snowstorm, you know, they get in the way and all of a sudden, you know, public works department is out of commission for a month and they can't get to that project or that RFP or whatever it is. And so there, there is a, there's an ebb and flow and everybody has to stay nimble, but, but absolutely the, the, the budget is the largest policy document that we've got. Okay. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of move a little bit forward and pivot to a couple of questions. And I want to get the mayor's input on these because this is, this goes both ways and want to get input from both sides. And so Mayor Okerlander to you and to Laura, from the administration perspective, you know, in, And so Mayor Okerlander, to you and to Laura, from the administration perspective, you know, in, in what things can be put into place to help facilitate the success of the different city departments? While also giving that information, we've heard a whole number of examples here, wondering, you know, what popped out and what might work for things like packet timing and early involvement and kind of the full cost assessment for different projects. Knowing full well that most of these things are at least some change to a current system and that will take some getting used to and will take some time to do. But also hoping that that time and investment upfront for the benefit of council's involvement will result in a more streamlined process. Is there anything that we heard or that you can add to it that you might be able to add to the list? Oh, Laura's ready to roll. All right, Laura, go for it.
I'll start though.
Okay, go ahead, Mary.
You know, in general, you know, I, I was on council for eight years. So I know full well what it means to get a packet on a Friday afternoon and go to a council meeting on Tuesday. That concept is very, very valid to me. I think part of the challenge we have is current council procedures, Jody's trying to get them out on Thursday as best she can. Council procedures have them going out on Fridays, so we try and get it out as early as we possibly can. It's an issue of workload, to be quite frank. When we get bids out and projects out, this, our work directors are working directors and they are balancing all sorts of different things. So for example, last Friday, we had urban flooding and some issues in neighborhoods. So our public works director was literally out in the rain in the trenches where he might have been home doing policy work. And so there needs to be some grace where we try and get things out as soon as possible. But I, when we originally went to the, the format that we have now with committee of the whole, the intent was to have a meeting every week. And I think that we, the amount of work that the city has to do has changed dramatically in the last 10 years and it's probably literally twice the workload of what we used to have. And so there is a necessity for more council time. That's just, there's no way of avoiding it. And people have to be willing to put in that extra time on extra days in order to properly review these things. So I think, you know, from, that's just kind of a simple thing right there. I think, you know, one of the things that, you know, we were starting committees again and that got kind of halted. But that, we have a finance and admin committee that has taken on pretty much everything in the city. And then the public safety committee. And what we actually need is an additional land use committee and a public works committee. But we also need to be able to manage the amount of time our staff spends on those. Because we should be able to get through with three council members in a two-hour meeting, get through everything that you need. And then it should be an easier touch for the committee of the whole because that's part of the point. You know, I think that there's, you know, council can do a lot to update your procedures. Council updates your procedures, which is all yours. Then we can make changes to how we do business, but there, if we can strive to get packets out a week in advance. However, there then has to be the recognition that if we have a grant application or something emergency, we're gonna have to have less than a week's review. And most often, that's what happens when we have to bring something forth is either an emergency happens and staff can't get to it. Or we're put on a really short timeline and we don't have time in between meetings. So many of the city councils in the state now meet weekly for formal meetings. If there is a way to have consensus on some of these consent agenda items and save time, that would be a big help. And then being, I think it would be a big help to have, you know, if we're gonna do a committee of the whole, you know, have those workshops. You know, have a workshop every week, even if it's on a council night where it's a short hour. You know, I, we still need to have that additional time because breaking it up, the way I see it from experience is breaking it up and having a committee of the whole on one week and just the council meeting the next is not going to give the time necessary to delve into the issues the way the council wants to. So what we need is council to be willing to commit that time as well. In order to make that happen. So that's just, you know, I'm sure I'll have more thoughts as, as Laura talks, but those are just my initial gut reactions and things that have been weighing on my mind for the last few years. I think the other thing to remember is in, you know, particularly with the planning department and budget, we do budget for stuff. But much of our policy in the last two years has been derailed because of workload and planning. And, you know, it's a real, real issue that if we are going to get all of this work done, we have to have the staffing levels to do it. And I can't justify my directors working 50 to 55 hours a week on a regular basis. That tells me that there's a staffing need and that there's not enough people to do the work. And we either need to be able to pull back and only work on our mandatory, which is essentially what I've been trying to get staff to do for the last two years. Or do some, or, or change the staffing levels, which we're working on in another avenue with the workload analysis. But it's, you know, we all want these things, I think, and it's, it's a matter of how you get it done and the choices to get it done are going to be challenging.
Great. Well, so, so a few of the key things that I heard there is number one, I think there, there's a, a willingness from, from the mayor administration to move that agenda packet to, to meet it, knowing that, you know, maybe it's not going to be perfect every time because things come up late. I think that meets a need the council identified. In terms of spending the time, I think I saw a lot of nods about, you know, going to every other week or, you know, trying to find a way to, to, to do those touches. So I think, not to put words in your mouth, but, but it seemed like, you know, putting in the work was definitely on the table. You're already doing that. That was why I brought it up. You have such long nights. So I think that, you know, that shouldn't be a problem at all. And I, and I would just make one observation, you know, the idea of a working director. You know, all, all directors in different cities obviously are doing a lot of work. But when you're trying to do the, the plan review and you're trying to clear, clear the leaves and everything, that takes a lot of time away from management of a department. And in my interactions with the directors in the city, they're, they're so busy. And, you know, just trying, trying to make it work and trying to actually do that hands-on work, but then also do these big picture things which involve, you know, agenda packets and updates and meetings and, and employment and employee matters. So I, I think that that's an important thing for everybody to remember is everybody's working real hard. And that's everybody here on the screen. Everybody's got their own personal lives, their day jobs, their city commitments to, to, to work in and get all this done. So I think that's an important thing. Laura.
Thank you. So my comments are really based on the observations that have been provided and even some of the options or opportunities that Daniel has given us. And then even to add on a little bit to what the mayor said. You know, we're a growing city. I don't think we can do two meetings a month anymore. And Daniel and I meet on Fridays and talk about like some of our observations and things that we think that we might be able to do better and bring forward in the future. And so this is an item that I am very passionate about. I don't think we can get business done in two meetings. It is really hard on staff to go from a cow to a council as well. Cause I mean, I know everybody in this, in this virtual room works, but a lot of us are in it, you know, between six or seven. And so it's a lot to try and do and just keep that energy level up. So I think if we did, you know, two action meetings and two cow meetings a month, that that would be a really good start. I really did like the conversation that was about let's keep presentations out of the cow. We've talked about that before. And make sure that there's real, there's more dialogue there, especially when projects are early on. That's a great opportunity to have that discussion then. I also heard, and I think this is a really good idea as well, is, you know, a, a small written report, you know, once a month by departments. And maybe it's not a full vetted out report, but it's like this project is starting or this is coming up. And maybe we think about, you know, it's pretty short, maybe it's just a couple of pages. And it gets either attached to a council agenda or it automatically goes out on the last Friday of the month to council, whatever we decide as, you know, as a group to do. The packet, getting it out earlier, wow, I like, I'll, I'll channel Jody right now because she would love everything that was talked about. We have to figure out how to get our packet out earlier, but internally then we have to look at our own internal controls. And that's an administrative item, but I'll tell you, like, I'm still waiting, I shouldn't say I, I should say we are still waiting on several agenda items to be completed and tomorrow's Wednesday. But that's not because of necessarily a staffing issue, it's because of a timing issue, which the mayor was talking about. So like, we have stuff that's going on the agenda for the CARES Act, but the, you know, the deadline for the applications isn't until tomorrow. Well, that makes it hard on us to get something prepared and done so that it can go out on a Thursday. In fact, it makes it almost impossible. We also are working on the community survey, so the mayor and Amy and councilmember McHenry are working on that. We have a bid for a project, you know, so we're, we're just trying to put all these pieces together still for for a council packet. So there's like three or four items that are just like these time, timeline issues. But we do have items that are already complete and reviewed and out there. So that's, I see that as an internal challenge for us that I'm not sure we'll be able to fully resolve, but I think that we can really work on. I think we would internally really like to get our packet out on Wednesday, which is almost a week in advance. And so I think if that's a goal of, you know, the council and administration, that we can certainly start to make strides at doing that. I also think that it's definitely time for the city to be hiring a city administrator. Because you, you've needed one for a while and we've done without one. And we've done, I think, you know, a pretty good job at that. And, you know, we are budgeting for that type of work for next year in 2022. Because, you know, we're all working directors and we're all trying to pitch in to do city administration. And then I pitch in, you know, what is supposed to be five hours a week of city administration. But I'm quite honestly usually through that by Monday or Tuesday. So I think that's, oh, I forgot, I have one more thing on here. I think we do need to look at at least monthly committee meetings, so land use, public works, public safety. And only if needed, like if, if there's a time where it's not needed, then you wouldn't obviously meet just to meet. But that's a really good time to talk. I think one of the council members said it's the time to do that temperature check. That's the first opportunity for us to do a, a temperature check so that we don't come in hot into council with something that's totally off target. It is so, I mean, it's honestly, it's hard for us and it's almost embarrassing for us sometimes if we come in with, you know, just in the wrong, in the wrong, the wrong alley. We went down the wrong alley and we don't want to do that. And I think one way to help us is to get earlier guidance too. We obviously have comp plans and we have, you know, CIPs and stuff. But as we're going through projects or policies early on, and I can just use, you know, planning as an example, but say we're redoing the parking standards and, you know, my team's like three months into it and then we just, you know, landed at a cow. And you guys are like, whoa, what have you been doing for three months? You know, we don't want to do that. We don't want to see that type of policy work either because it's hard on, on staff and it's hard on council. So I'm a big believer in going to committee, but the committees have to be short. They have, you know, because our time is, you know, is, is short every day. And so, you know, probably like 90-minute cows is about what we can handle, like agenda and staffing and preparing materials. So thank you for letting me participate. I think I'm done. Thanks.
Well, no, absolutely. I mean, a, a couple of the things that I heard there that I think are really important, they, they go with the themes from, from other comments as well. Is having the monthly, whatever it ends up being, monthly written memo, status update, report, whatever you call it. Gives an opportunity for council members to see things and to, to raise a flag, like, hey, I need, I need more discussion on that. Or that doesn't sound like it's going right. It won't be, you know, obviously a treatise on each thing, but it'll at least give an idea on direction, topic, things like that. And then a council member could reach out and say, hey, I'd love to have that on a, a cow meeting coming up soon so that we can dive into that with a little bit more detail. And I think the same is true with a committee meeting, either the report could lead to a committee meeting or the committee meeting could say, hey, this is something that I think everybody is going to need to touch. So let's get that to a cow meeting so that we can get it. And again, what we're trying to do is we're trying to find touches throughout early on in the process. And everybody's getting that involvement that we all want without overly inserting as an individual or anything like that. And so, so I think that's great. So I want to be very mindful of your time this evening. I think now we are both over the, the extension. So, so I think what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna wrap up with a couple of thoughts. I'm gonna tell you the topic that we didn't get to and I would ask that everybody think about it. I, I don't want to take any comments on it right now because we're not gonna have a full discussion. But the topic is how, how do we manage council meetings when the, the disagreements go more than that? When they become arguments or when they escalate to a point where it's not something that we should be having at the council meeting? How are we going to manage those situations so that everybody is able to finish their, their thoughts and to contribute what they want to contribute? And that we don't have any escalation? And again, I don't want to get into that right now because I think that, I think that falls on all of our shoulders to own our involvement in those. And then also if we need to come up with some tools and some standard practices on how we address those things. I know that I would appreciate that so that I understand how those things would be dealt with. The council rules of procedure have a little bit of it, but honestly, not anything that I'm thrilled about. So if there's some other way that we can all say, you know, let's take a break or mayor pro tem, you know, you need to step in and, you know, do this. Whatever, whatever that is, we need to have a clear understanding of how we're gonna utilize those strategies to make sure that we don't have any arguments that are more than just a disagreement. Because again, that's totally fine. Everybody should have their opinions and express those. So I'm just gonna leave that one right there. I want to thank everybody so much for the time tonight. This was much longer than I think you anticipated. I, I really enjoyed the first half. I thought that was very interesting and very useful. I hope you did too. And thank WCIA for providing that. And I hope this is just the start of a dialogue on how we can get people what they want and need in this process. Because like I said, one of my first points, there's a lot of passion here and a lot of talent that is being brought to the table by this collective group. And you guys are gonna get a lot done and I think you'll get a significant amount more done with some of these things kind of ironed out a little bit so that everybody is moving forward kind of with the same mindset. Not necessarily same opinions, but the same mindset on how things should get done. So I certainly appreciate that. Does anybody have any closing thoughts or anything that they wanted to contribute before we conclude?
I just want to say thank you, Daniel. You know, is the one thing we haven't done enough of over the last two and a half years is training and group work. And so when you brought this up, I was thrilled that it was your recommendation to devote time to this and it's desperately needed. And I think this was a good conversation and I, I very much appreciate it.
Well, I, I appreciate everybody's participation and willingness to be here. It was a great conversation. I thought it was super productive. And I've got a whole list of stuff. I'm gonna kind of put those into an email and email it out to everybody just to kind of, you know, document some of what we got. But again, this, this is gonna take some time to, you know, flesh all this stuff out and, and to, to make it work. So really appreciate everybody's time.
With that, I guess we're officially adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Have a good night, everyone.